All right, good evening. Noah? Brian, Noah?
Hello.
Well, good to see everybody that's here this evening and want to welcome our new council members to the council meeting this evening. We have Charles Knight Chief with council seat. We have Patricia McCray, she's our secretary, and then Darrell Wildcat was brought back as the vice president, so we welcome them to our council meeting. And I'd ask everybody be easy on her.
Talk slow.
Talk slow.
Talk slow.
And draw pictures.
Not that bad.
Okay, not that bad. But we're glad that you're all here, and so I am calling the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting May 25th, 2017 to order. And at this time, we will have our invocation and prayer. And ask my sister Sammy to do it.
All right. Heavenly Father God, we come to you this evening, grateful for a beautiful day, grateful for the lives of all of our loved ones, Heavenly Father, asking special blessings tonight for our elders, mourners, children like that within our nation, our neighbors, Heavenly Father. Ask that you deal with our council here, that working on behalf of the Pawnee people, that we make right decisions and are about the people. Asking all of us in Christ Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll move to item number two, which is road call.
Here. Darrell Wildcat?
Here.
Patricia McCray, here. Angela Thompson?
Here.
Sammy Atson?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Here.
Ellis Horstie? How do you want me to address that?
He is not here this evening.
Charles Knight Chief?
Here.
All right, I will declare a quorum. Just wanted to say this evening that I want to say to the family of Ellis Horstie Chief, we still continue to attend our condolences, and he has won his seat, and his seat is empty at this time, and we will deal with that later on on the agenda. So at this time, we will move on to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda, and we are going to add an item number 10 on new business, which is approval and selection of safe routes to school.
CM?
CM.
The park manager or?
Yeah, instruction manager.
Oh, CM.
Instruction manager.
Instruction manager. Okay. Was there anything else?
No, I have a question, though, or clarification on executive session for item number two. That was discussed in open forum, so I'm not sure why it's put in executive session, because we had that discussion in open forum. And I think it should stay in open forum. So I make that motion.
That has to do with a complaint that was made by an employee against a council member, and I think that would be improper and need to remain in executive session, in my opinion.
No, it wasn't an employee.
I think.
The travel.
No, that's a different one.
Oh, I didn't get, I didn't get the doctor. I sent two packets.
She sent two packets.
Oh.
What happened to the travel?
It's in there, though. It's in your executive session packet. I added it to there. I didn't know.
Well, I think that piece should be held in open forum, because we discussed it in open forum.
Which one?
The travel. So that's, I make that motion to bring it out of executive session, just that piece, and move it to item number 11.
I would like to bring up item out of executive session, or have justification on why it needs to be sent to executive session, on the discussion for call-in voting for Pawnee Business Council. I think that should be open discussion.
I agree.
I agree, too.
And I'm not sure about the discussion and action on payment to Pawnee Nation College. I'm not sure whether that should be in executive session, unless there's issues there that have to be discussed.
All right, let's look at, on the executive session, item one, discussion on call-in voting, PBC. That was based on the last business council meeting that we had, and a call-in voting as far as the procedure of making motion and voting. That's what this, that's discussion is about. And, you know, constitutionally, we'll be looking at that. Item number two is discussion on the Pawnee Business Council complaint. That needs to stay in executive session. That was a complaint from an employee about a seated council member, so I think that needs to stay in executive session. Item number three is discussion and/or action on payment to Pawnee Nation College tribal funds. And this, this is just an ongoing thing that we have, we have been talking about for months now, and.
I think it needs to be transparent.
Yeah.
Outside of executive session. Yes.
Draw the money.
Right. I'm wanting to amend my motion to include taking the item number three and item number one, and the including, and with the travel, to bring it out in open forum as item number 11. I'll add that to my motion.
Who makes these decisions on executive sessions?
She says. She's the secretary when it's being, the agenda's being done.
Yes.
The motion was to green item number one, item number three, and the traveler Mason's
report on the travel, brought that, bring that out of executive session into open forum as item number 11. That's my motion.
In that order, 11, 12, and 13? Is that how you sure?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need.
Okay.
So item number 11 is what?
Discussion on call-in voting, PBC.
On voting?
Mm-hmm.
And 12 is?
College.
Pawnee Nation College?
No.
And 13 is?
The travel.
Travel.
Those ten.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on that, or is one of your items for the agenda?
You have some more items?
Yeah, I'd like to have three items removed off the table. I would like to have on the table.
Well, can we, can we vote on this one and then do that?
Sure.
I think that would be more clearer, if you don't mind. Because that's my motion. There's a motion on the table.
To, just, just about the executive session?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's, any more discussion on that? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Executive, what is it that we're putting on in that executive session? Removing one and three?
One and three.
Out of executive session to open forum?
Right.
Okay, fine.
And travel, the travel.
And travel.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Okay, there's been a motion by Angela to bring out item number one and three and travel report out of two, out of executive session into open forum. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We do have a second, so call for the vote.
But I don't have that on my list, right? So it's a whole new thing.
Oh.
All right. Grace?
Oh, item book.
Oh, you don't know?
Item book.
Okay. Okay, Darrell?
Darrell Wildcat.
Darrell Wildcat.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Patricia McCray? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
So do I still mention Ellison's, or we're out of that? Okay. Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
All right, so those, those are placed, item 11, 12, and 13, and only one item on executive session, and what was the other?
The Human Resource Committee would like to request removal of three items off the tableed agenda. We are requesting removing Resolution 1726, cultural leave policy provisions. We're requesting Resolution 1727, grievance procedure steps, and Resolution 1729, employee handbook.
Is that all?
Yes. I'll second that.
We have a motion to remove tabled items, Resolution 1726, item number three, item number four, 1727, and item number five, 1729, off of the tabled items list, and we have a motion. Is there any more discussion? I'm sorry, second. Oh, you second. Angela seconds. Any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Darrell Wildcat?
Yes.
Patricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
All right. Are there any more additions or substitutions from the agenda?
Okay.
All right, we can entertain a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Does it kind of make a motion to accept the agenda with the changes that were referenced?
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Donna seconds. Call for the vote.
Who, I'm sorry, who seconded it, Donna? Darrell Wildcat?
Yes.
Patricia McCray?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
Okay, agenda is approved. We move to item number four, approval of minutes, Pawnee Business Council meeting minutes, 4/24/17.
I can't find that second.
All right, we can entertain a motion to approve the agenda with changes. Is there a second? Call for the vote.
Who, I'm sorry, who seconded it, Donna?
Yes.
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
All right, we can entertain a motion.
I have to say something. I always feel like that reading at that time, and going back through it, rereading it, and then going over the Constitution, there was some things that I feel that weren't in compliance with the Constitution concerning voting and making amendments. So I really don't know how we can handle this, since this is on record now of being done. Do we just overlook this? I mean, I, it was just something that was overlooked at the time, and do we just go ahead and approve, and ask, and then discuss later what should have been done?
Darrell, can you pinpoint what line, what number, what line you're talking about, that's, what's in conflict with the Constitution on that one?
Okay. Angela, Secretary, I mean, I'm sorry, Treasurer Thompson used to call in a conference call, and there was a quorum with Ms. Atson, Ms. Hare, Ms. Dillison, Spotted Horse Chief, and Chairman Teeter present. Looking at the Constitution, well, it would be in the voting, because the treasurer took part in every, every item that was brought up and to vote, whereas when I read the Constitution, to vote, you had to be present, and also to make a motion, you had to be present and not call in on that procedure. So I don't, that's something, so it's all through the minutes here, whereas Treasurer Thompson voted, or even made a motion at one time, which was according to the Constitution, you must be present to do that.
So Darrell?
Yes.
So is your question about the minutes and the way they're written and what happened, or is your question that, what the actions that occurred were the issue?
Well, that is two items right there, and it is something that's not, I'm not even clear on myself, because going back through the minutes and then reading the Constitution, well, there was a conflict, but at the time, I saw no problem with it. I saw no problem with Treasurer Thompson calling in, voting, making a motion. I thought it was to the good, and, but I don't know if we vote. Should accept this minutes as, as they are?
Does it, pardon me, but does the Constitution say it here, in the, I mean, like, right here, physically here, or does it say?
It doesn't define.
Present. It doesn't define it, so it's really.
Part of the law of the Constitution, Pawnee Business Council, Section 5. I'll read, "All acts of the Pawnee Business Council shall be determined by a majority vote of the membership present, provided that five members of the council shall constitute form of that's activated." I had members, I had several tribal members approach me about the April 24th council meeting about several issues, because it's just one. And upon talking to them and reevaluation of the Constitution, the way I see it, it's members need to be physically present.
That's his opinion. The thing is, is the Constitution is silent. It says present, but it doesn't define what present is. And this day.
I define present.
I'm not, please let me finish before you interrupt me. I'm tired of being interrupted by you. In this day and age with technology, you know, we, the council hasn't defined what, what it is, and what present is, and the Constitution doesn't define it as well. So I just throw that argument out for you all to consider as well.
So my question is, are you guys trying to approve what was done in the last meeting? So this is just approving the minutes of what happened? Because I think that's, that question itself is going to be discussed later on, but, so is it approval of minutes, or you think that the minutes just aren't legit anyway?
Well, I, I feel it's, let's just, we need to approve the minutes, but I'm just to say that after further reading, it's, like you say, it's probably needs to be discussed later, but right now, we need to approve those minutes.
Because I think that the minutes are just a description of what was discussed and what was done.
But it's the official, too. If we come, if we discuss this issue later, and we decide that, no, we have to be physically present, then it will negate what happened, what occurred at this meeting. So I think it directly affects, because this will be the official record, and if we go back in this later discussion and, and say we all agree that, no, we need to be physically present, then it will negate, or it'll make these invalid, in my opinion.
So you just need, so just quickly, then why don't we just table this, the approval, and move on, so we get to that part, decide if we do it minutes later?
Yes, that's good idea.
Just table that, tell later.
I'll make that motion.
Yes.
Patricia McCray?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's still four.
Angela Thompson?
Oh, turn her up a little. Go on, you're on both ways down.
Angela Thompson?
There you go.
Yes. Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Yes. Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
So, motion carries. Motion carries, so let's table it. Thank you. Looking like, for your people. Who's going here? Okay, so, PBC meeting minutes, 4/24/17, are tabled. We move to item number five, which is Pawnee Business Council's President's Report. This evening, I, I'll, I'll tell you all that I went to the Direct Service Tribes Advisory Council meeting. It was held in Portland. And, you know, we, we are, we are living in a real different day and age after this last election, and, you know, a lot of the issues that we are having right now, the things, the big discussion items, is the budget. The budget that we had proposed, and now, as of yesterday, the budget that came out that the President has proposed, and the huge hundreds of millions of dollars difference in, in what we had proposed and what the President has, has been proposing. And, and so, you know, the President is also proposing drastic cuts to many, many different programs. You know, the, the one that the Direct Service Tribes that we looked at was the special diabetes program, and that is on the chopping block from the President to, to just get rid of the special diabetes, and so, you know, we have really tried to, really need to advocate of keeping that. This is, this is one of the few programs that the federal government has given monies towards Indian people for the special diabetes, and, and we have data, we have, we have data that proves that this program has worked, and the numbers prove it and everything, and now they're trying to, trying to get rid of that. And so, you know, we, we're looking at that, and all of the medical services are looking at that. The other thing that was brought up, I found real interesting, was that the Navajo's, they have a junk food tax. They have a junk food tax. And so if you, if you go and you want to buy cigarettes and pop and candy bars, you know, all of potato chips and all that, they, they tax that, they put an extra tax on that, and they use those monies to provide for healthy choices and resources for that Navajo nation. So I found that really interesting. I don't know if Pawnee would ever want to do that, but there's a, there's a program working out there in Navajo country, and so I thought I'd mention that. One of the others is, you know, there's a lot of discussion on Senate Bill 465, which is the IHS Accountability Act, and, you know, our, our fear is that they're going to use this to, to cut services, and, and so that has really come onto our plate, and, and it was during this time when, you know, as we, we have all heard, that the House voted to repeal the Affordable Care Act, and then they sent it on to the Senate. And so once again, we are aware of that, and, and, you know, once again, we are advocating for Congress to keep the Indian provision in the Affordable Care Act intact, and to protect IHS. And so they also talked about the opioid abuse, prescription drugs, pain meds, and this is really a, a emphasis from HHS Secretary Price, and, and so they're really going to be putting a lot of monies into prevention and fighting this epidemic. And so that, those are some of the things that we had talked about. Also attended the Seventh Generation Conference, I don't know if I spoke on that the last time, but there in Tulsa, the Cherokee had put that on, and my part was to speak on the tribal leadership on health issues there, and had, had a, a good time in sharing some of the things that, that I do, and, and the issues that, that try to push forward in Indian country. We also had a meeting, a Unicot meeting, down in Shawnee, and unfortunately, that was the day that it, it was just pouring rain. It was just terrible weather, you know, tornadic weather. A lot of the folks didn't attend, but those that did, it was a good meeting. Did I speak on that? Okay, never mind, okay. But anyway, Angela was there, it was a good meeting. And also had a BIA meeting, but I'll let Angela speak on, on that, when we come to that. Had a HHS meeting that I attended the last two days down in Oklahoma City, and once again, big, the big item was the budget, more funding going forward. They're having a congressional task force, which is looking to, they call it a reimagination, reimagine, reimagine, better services, reimagine how, 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 how the IHS, how they can do things better, and so it's, it's looking at restructuring, it's looking at. And once again, the big item was the budget, more funding going forward. They're having a congressional task force, which is looking to... They call it a re-imagination. Reimagine, reimagine, better services, reimagine how the IHS... How they can do things better. And so it's looking at restructuring. It's looking at restructuring. And I attended a call-in call today. And it is going full blast. And so the IHS is really taking this initiative serious. And what I was told today is they had 170 people who are involved in this up there at headquarters. They pulled folks from all over the country to headquarters. And they're working, you know, 10 hours a day. And they've been at this already for three weeks. And so they are looking to move fast and hard, trying to find better ways to use the resources that are there and how to better enforce medical services for Indian people at the national level and the area levels. And, you know, our concern as far as tribal leaders, as far as tribal nations is, is this another way for the government to cut resources and monies to tribal nations? And so, you know, the IHS budget, the HHS budget came out yesterday. And, you know, there's a day before yesterday, and there's a $300 million cut that is supposed to be placed upon IHS. And so that's just terrible. And so, you know, we all need to get busy. And hopefully, our congressmen will listen and, you know, help us. They need to help us. And so, you know, the ACF is being effective. SAMSA, PERSA, you know, special diabetes like they had talked about, all of these programs which assess Indian people's livelihoods is going to be cut completely down to zero. So all of this funding that has helped tribal nations and all people are going to be hit. You know, my concern is this, as, you know, the different places where I go and what I'm listening to is, you know, because the president's budget affects everybody. Everybody in the United States is going to be affected by this budget. And my fear is this, is that since everybody's affected, everyone's going to be, you know, hollering and trying to get the attention of Congress to listen to them. And we are here as Indian people. And we are going to be in that conversation, asking folks to listen to us. And the thing that I voiced yesterday was this, is that, you know, yes, we, along with everybody else, we're United States citizens, just like everybody else. We're United States citizens. However, we're unlike everybody else in being United States citizens in the fact that we have treaty obligations. The federal government has a trust responsibility to Indian people to take care of our health and our housing and education. And that's what's there. And we all have those treaties. And I don't know what it's going to take, folks. I don't know what it's going to take because these cuts are going to be devastating. You know, they are saying that to Indian country, if this budget goes forward, that that's going to be a billion-dollar hit. A billion-dollar hit to Indian country. And I don't know how you make that up, you know? And so those are the things that are really pressing tribal governments now. And so we're attending meetings. And my fear is that they're just not hearing this. They're just not going to hear us. But we need to be loud and we need to be heard. So these things are there. So, wish I had better news. I wish I had news that, hey, they're going to give us more money and more funding. But that's not how it is right now. So those are the meetings that I attended. Any questions? All right. Item number six, Pawnee Business Council Committee and Tribal Reports. And Dawn, I'll start with you down on my left, please.
Okay. So the Indian Resources Committee is taking three of the policy policy agenda. And one of them is basically covered, culturally just covered, an administrative lead policy right now. So we're going to leave that as it is. But we're going to be working on the grievance procedure and bringing that back. We're also looking at a few other policies. But we really need to sit down and go over those. So it'll be a couple of meetings, folks, bring any policies back. On enrollment, Carrie's going to be here presenting today. And we're going to be working on the enrollment ordinance coming up here soon on the Enrollment Act. And that's all I have. I'll be right back.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Angela, we'll skip you down here, actually. Or do you have a report? Oh, no, okay, all right.
Okay. I attended the Self-Governance Conference in Spokane. Actually, I was just down the street from you, I don't know, but until later. On the IHS side, basically talked about the Trump's plan and how to work with it in Tribal Caucus, as well as... I mean, that was kind of the main focus. There were some initiatives or presentations that I thought were important. I brought that information on to the executive director for some follow-up because he had some... There's a group of people are starting to look at tax revenue, different types of tax revenue. And I knew that Andrew had brought that up before. So I think it would be a good form because there's some national leaders that really drive... Are good at driving efforts. So I think it would be good for us to be a part of that. Same thing on the BIA side, as well as I attended the BIA meeting, information meeting in Oklahoma City. And a lot of that information, Bruce and I had a talk about that. And we brought forth in the caucus, the Tribal Caucus. And Gerald Conville's going to take that forward to at least the regional office, that the tribal representatives have more input on that agenda. Because basically, it's just providing information to tribal leaders on programs. And we're there to hear about money and how we can increase the dollars. There was no mention of this Trump's administration and how they're dealing with that. And I thought that was very odd in the light of the, you know, him preparing his budget. So we had a good meeting in Tribal Caucus. We brought that forward. A lot of the same complaints were that we worked really hard on the 2019 process as well as the 2018 budget formulation process. And as you all are aware, I'm a representative for the Tribal Interior Budget Council on the BIA side, which they call TIBIC. And we participate in budget formulation. And as a representative of that, I served 24 tribes in that region, in the Southern Plains region. So it's just not Pawnee, it's all those tribes that provide input in priorities going up to the TIBIC. And we have the ear of the Assistant Secretary, sometimes the Deputy Secretary of Interior, where we provide input on our priorities. This year's priorities was law enforcement, tribal court, Indian child welfare and education, not in that order. And we had to come up with 8% and an 8% increase. So what we did is, from those people that were present at that meeting, we did the priorities. We also established a separate budget committee to engage other tribes to help us reach out to the 24 tribes because there's been low participation at the Southern Plains region level. But a lot of the frustration and a lot of the reasons why we think that there's low participation is because they feel that the information, as it goes up through the chain, gets lost when you're meeting with all the other 14 regions in TIBIC. And you have the Navajo Nation and other larger tribes in the Great Plains area as well that you get outvoted at that level. And so we were a little bit frustrated because we worked really hard on justification and providing that information and going forward. But when we got the report that was sent to Congress and up to a central office who prepares the budget and then sends it on to Congress, or to the appropriations committee, none of that... None of those justifications were even in there, which is... So we requested for 8%, but there was no justification why. And we provided a lot of statistics, a lot of data on how many more people, families we could serve with the ICW increase, how many more case managers we could hire, and how it would benefit, you know, our people. And so none of that got moved on up. So that's my job as a representative when I go to the national meetings and with the whole TIBIC Committee, Council, that I express that. There was a call that, a Dear Tribal Leader letter went out about a meeting, a conference call yesterday by Jim Kason, who is the Associate Deputy Secretary. And Mike Black there, he's the Acting Indian Affairs Director as well and Acting Assistant Secretary for Indian Affairs. Anyway, so there was a lot of tribal leaders on there. And we were all in queue, but by the time... The time ran out, so I didn't get to speak. So I did forward my question and my comments on to Amber Evar, the NCAI, and asked her to forward it to Mr. Kason and Mr. Black. And I also will share that at TIBIC as well. Because the main frustration is, you know, in his letter to us, he said he wants, Trump want in his plan, he's including Indian country to make America great again. But... So my question was, how can we make America great again, especially in Indian country, with a decrease this year in 2018 of 303.4 million dollars overall in Interior's budget? And then in the Office of Indian Programs, it's 181-point million-dollar decrease. So how can we make America great with all this, with him decreasing Interior or Indian Affairs, which drastically hits our programs? They're not doing the pilot project for Tohawee. The increases for Tohawee, the Family Matters Initiative will remain the same. We'll continue to get that funding, but they're not funding anything more. They're doing away with that project. So it's a work in progress. And I still do my best to try to get that word out and on up. And one thing that I was pleased about is this year, for the first time in a long time, TIBIC has they... Indian Affairs has hired an outside consulting group to analyze the budget formulation process. So they recognize and realize that there's some issues there and some weaknesses. And so they reached out to everybody and asked for input. And so hopefully, through that input and that dialogue, that some changes will come about, I'm hoping, you know? It's a start somewhere. So that's BIA meeting as well as TIBIC. I also attended the Tohwee and Ski Man meetings when, you know, we had elections. And I think that we need to reach out more to our Chiefs Council because they have a lot of good ideals and a lot of... They're trying to do activities at the Tohwee meeting. They talked about Bison and agricultural. And I feel, you know, that's kind of our goal. So I don't... I think we need to collaborate instead of we have two groups working towards the same goal and make sure our resources are going, you know, being maximized. So... But it was a good meeting. Actually, that was the very first band meetings I've ever been to. That's the very first time I ever even received notice that they were having them and when they were. You know, maybe it's Facebook because that's where I've seen it. But it was a good meeting. They're both good meetings, so that's all I have. Budget meetings are on here, so I'm not going to go to there. And we had no property meetings. Thank you.
Any questions? Darryl?
I attended the Standing Bear Native American Foundation at Pompa City, at the Standing Bear Museum and Santa there. And basically, what it is, is they meet once a year. And what it is, is just financial reports and what's going on. There are a lot of fundraising. It's what they do. They try to keep their museum and park up to... It's a very beautiful park. It's really well-kept. They've got a pretty good budget. And they have a lot... They mentioned, of course, a powwow is a part of their program. And they actually lost money last year's powwow by about $4,000. I started thinking that was bad. I thought that was okay. They have broken down food vendors, program sales, souvenir sales. And that's their probably only really outlay that they have for the powwow because everything else is income through their gift shop. And basically, it's their gift shop. And they bring in a lot of visitors from around the country that come there, which I thought was really interesting. It's rated one of the top attractions in Oklahoma. And of course, the Pawnees are a part of this. It was a good meeting. Other tribal leaders there were Don Shaw from the Oto, Missouri, and Mr. Trey Howe from the Ponka tribe. They were in attendance. They... Their facilities is their... They don't charge for any activities like the colonation. They have their language program there. And it's free of charge, once a week. The White Eagle Health Clinic, meet there once a month for the area tribes, Oto, Oz, Ponkawas, they come there and have a free clinic. And also, the Oseges, they... What was interesting, they have their executive sessions there away from the Huska. So that's where they have their executive sessions. So they don't meet in Huska where they have their council meeting. They'll go out of town and get away from the people and have their discussions on the executive segment. I thought it was kind of interesting. That's what the Oseges do. And like I say, it's all free of charge. They don't charge any of the tribes any fees or anything. They also do weddings and reunions. And they just go there and ask for, tell them what you want. And they'd be more than happy to work with you. I thought that was rather interesting. Also, this week, I attended the Department of Veterans Affairs Tribal Veterans Representative Meeting. It was a training conference. It was... Matter of fact, it's still ongoing tomorrow is their last day. This began in, from what I gathered, it began with the reservation tribes up there in the north, Montana, North Dakota, South Dakota, Utah. Veterans Affairs, this was too far away from the veterans up there on those reservations. There was no outreach program or anything like that. So veterans got together up there and worked with the Veterans Administration and getting help to have people come to the reservation to let the veterans know what their rights and benefits are in all programs that's available to the veteran. And from there, expanded. And now, and I've heard of this program. I heard about it over a year ago. I ran into a friend of mine up there and I was out in California. He was... was down from Oregon on a, coming from Phoenix, from a veterans meeting, where they was, he was giving information on how to get started on these programs, and to train your own tribal members and get them certified through the VA to be a Veterans Representative and giving their programs. The paperwork is, is mountainous. So, like I say, it's, when I got there, and they handed me a four-inch stick book with two piles of papers, and this is your programs. It's, it's mind-blowing, what was available to the veterans. The meeting, the meeting itself was, when, it was this kind of, there was Skyping from Skype, I guess it's Skype, from Montana, and it was kept going in and out, but there wasn't very good communication. So, when they were down trying to get their program or communication back up, you know, I was just kind of casually trying to go through all this paperwork. Came across some very interesting things that's entitled to all our veterans, and I hoped this word had gotten out to our Pawnee people, but I didn't see anybody else there, unless there was, I just didn't see them. But this is something, I ran, I met a man there, he does, he travels around to help get veterans started on his program and get them certified. So, I met with him and told him I'm going to get with him later, because I want to talk with our own veterans here about bringing this man here, anybody who's interested in this program to learn the ins and outs of the paperwork. And he also said, there is a man that goes around to the communities upon request, and he will come and set up a shop and just meet with veterans throughout the day for any and all questions concerning their benefits. And like I say, benefits covers everything, your health, dental, eyeglasses, just everything, housing, especially, they want to emphasize dependents, especially widows, children, dependents of the veteran who maybe have passed on, they are entitled to compensation. And that's something I didn't realize, you know, once that veteran passed on, that was, that was in it. But it continues on, and even after, there was a lady there who was a widow, and she brought the question, said, you know, my husband was a veteran, a combat veteran in Vietnam, and he's passed on and from cancer, and is there anything I can give as a widow of a veteran? And the lady said, yes, we can help you, we can help you, you are entitled, and you are entitled to maybe reimburse me if I'm at his death. So, that's something that was really interesting to me. There is so much that can be offered to the veterans, but it's just very, all of the paperwork, it's rather, I think that's why it was a link, it's a week-long meeting, because they just covered different sections of what's available to the veteran, and I thought it was very good. I will get with our local veterans and when we meet, and tell them about this program and see if we can get together and help one another move forward on the things that are entitled to us. And that's what I have to say on that.
All right, any questions? If not, we will move to Sam.
Thank you. My land use management committee, I lost two members, Adrian and Femi. I don't have a lot of, a lot of knowledge transfer from the trip that went on in Nebraska, so I'll be reaching out and understanding what actually happened. I know it was more of a process-type presentation that she went for, so hopefully we'll be able to get that, and I can regroup my team. I'm really looking forward to it, because we're trying to get our land into trust, and we're trying to leverage the land in Nebraska for our use, for ag. So, with that, I'm working on that. I also attended our band meeting for the Pekahoydakas, and Ron Rice was elected as our first chief, Tim Jim is our second chief. Thought that was a really good meeting over there. Again, they would like to have more participation there, have a seat at the table, and I would really like to see that happen again. I don't know when that was taken away from them, but it would really be nice to have them involved with our tribe, like that again. I also attended and enjoyed the dedication of the Roundhouse. If you haven't been there, I would highly suggest you go take a look, it's beautiful and very impressive, and I think that entire day was just an enjoyable event. There was lots of singing, lots of dancing, great food, thank you Cynthia, lots going on. And then, I'm also, my last committee that I'm involved with is the selection of our Pawnee Nation Princess. We're going to speak to that a little bit later this evening, so thank you. That's all I have.
Great. All right, well, let's move on to item number six, and this is Pawnee Business Council Committee, that was item number six, I'm sorry, item number seven, Pawnee Business Council Travel Request for Approval.
One is the NCAI, which is in next month. I think especially regarding all that has taken place with the President's budget, I know that Secretary Ryan Senkey is going to be there from the Department of the Interior, and James Kason, Associate Deputy Secretary, who will be, you know, having particular oversight over Indian affairs and Indian tribes. They're going to be there speaking, they're going to have special meetings with tribal leaders, and this is going to take place at the NCAI next month. Now, I'm not saying that, that I would like to go, but what I'm saying is somebody, I believe that somebody from council needs to go, that's one thing. And the other thing is, the museum, our museum, our culture division, there is a diorama, Ski-Dee Diorama up at the Field Museum in Chicago. And so, I had spoke with Herb, Herb Adson, and he is still out of pocket with his broke foot, broke ankle and things, and so we had discussed me driving up there and picking that up and bringing it back. And it will take a U-Haul, a pretty, pretty good-sized diorama. The Field Museum, museum has been trying to, they're going to give it to us, they have given it to us, we just need to get it here. And so, presenting those two travel requests, like I said, if not for myself, for somebody else to go to NCAI, I think we need the information, we need to be present at these national meetings, we need to, folks need to know that the Pawnees are there and engaged, so presenting those two. Paul and this?
President Pratt?
Yes.
With regards to the Chicago trip?
Yeah.
I thought that, I know that the cultural committee's been involved with that museum for over a year, and that would be John Michael, that would be Matt Reed, and Adrian. They were all scheduled to go up there to retrieve that, and also to catalog everything that we have up there. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of the catalog?
Yeah, they're going to, yeah, but they're trying to go up there to catalog all of our Pawnee artifacts that are there, that was going to take several days to do.
I'm not aware of that, I know that they're trying to get the diorama back-
Yeah, they're trying to do that.
-before the homecoming, that was the thing.
And it, to me, I mean, just personally speaking, that, I would just assume have our cultural team do that.
Well, just, just conversation.
I know, but I'm just saying, just save you some time, and I don't want you driving to U-Haul. Let them do it, I mean, that's what, that's what we have them for.
However, however we need to do it, that's all, just bringing that forward.
I'm in agreement too, because I think it's, you know, that that committee has been in discussion and has been in negotiations with bringing that back, and the cataloging that they were going to do, they developed that rapport with that museum, and to continue that rapport, I think it's good for our programs when they're in, when they're doing these things on behalf of the tribes, that they see them all the way out and all the way to the end. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a reward for, I think, our staff, that when they start something, they finish it and they bring it, bring it back. So, I'm in agreement with that too, so.
Okay, well, that's fine. Just my discretion.
What is the NCAI and where is it?
It's the National Congress of American Indians, it's in Unclesville?
Connecticut.
Connecticut?
Yeah.
And the dates? Also, I, I think I've already gotten approval for all of the TIBIC meetings, but it's coming up in July in Blackstaff, Arizona, and it's the 24th through the 27th, so I want to fill that back out there for you. And it's paid for by BIA.
And the NCAI trip, Ken, do we know what kind of money we're going to spend to go and just off the top of your head?
Well, the, I think the last two trips, I mean, they're pretty expensive trips, depending on where they're at. The registration's pretty high, even though we get a discount. I'd say approximately with lodging and everything could range up to two, two grand or more.
Okay. For me, personally, you know, just speaking on behalf of my seat one, I think it really is important that we have a place that, a seat at the table there, and I would recommend that one, you know, one or two of our officers go and do that. We need to be there, and bring all that back, of course, all that knowledge, so that would be my thing.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, item seven, that's what we're on, right?
Yes, sir.
Travel request for approval. Have there been any requests made yet? Are we just talking about going to meetings?
That's the request.
That is the request.
I heard like two different things.
NCAI, uh-huh.
And what about the one you were talking about?
Well, if staff is going, then, and what they're talking about is staff has been involved in-
Chicago.
-the Chicago thing.
They're okay with that.
That's fine.
So, they're not, they're not requesting you?
So, I'm withdrawing that request.
Okay.
And now, he's going to go to NCAI?
So, we're just talking about the one?
Yeah, the NCAI.
And the July meeting in Blackstaff?
Twenty-third or seventh?
Twenty-fourth through the 27th. But that's paid for by DOI. It's not using any tribal dollars.
Any other requests?
Or it's reimbursable?
Yes, sir.
I think we're, I think we're making requests to the Hall of Duty president?
Yes.
Okay.
So, President Pratt, would it be okay to say that we would allow two of our council members to attend NCAI, get travel approval for those two?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, and I would think that you would want to go.
I would go.
Perhaps, Daryl?
Whoever want to do that.
Or Angela.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have the time, and, no, I don't need to go. But I think it would be beneficial for maybe Secretary to go, because she's new, and they present a lot of information there that would help you learn that, you know, what other tribes are doing and things, it's a lot of good sharing of information, although I just made that recommendation.
If we're looking for an officer?
June 12th through the 15th.
I just have to check my calendar.
You have to collect your eleven?
But we also need to keep in mind too, is, is that this year, and I don't know where it's at, the NCAI is the annual meeting, that is the voting meeting, the new leadership, so all the new leadership.
Yeah.
And that's in October. So, just throwing that out there for later. So, that's always the big bi-annual meeting for that, the voting.
So, the bi-annual meeting in October?
It's not bi-annual, but it's bi-annual, every two years they vote the new leadership in.
Okay.
New president, so what's his name, is stepping, will be stepping down?
Clarice Lee.
Clarice Lee, yeah.
I just throw this out there for the council, because I know you all received Andrew's report, and he went into detail about the budget, the budget issues, and I've emailed and tried to keep you all abreast of what's going on going into 2018, and I advise you checks, I'm really monitoring tribal dollars and travel. Now, at this, so I throw this out there, because there's an October meeting of NCAI, which could potentially cost about the tribe five thousand dollars to send two people to go, and if that's a voting one, we may want to, I don't know, I just throw that out there, because we're in a, we're in a budget crunch, and we're going to be having to make some tough decisions, and all of our budgets, all of our tribal budgets are going to have to make some reductions. So, I just caution you on your, on your, on your trip.
All right, so did. So, we can entertain a motion, send two to NCAI?
I'll make a comment, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I really want you all to consider when you go to these national meetings, I think, I've always said it's important for the Pawnees to be at the table, to be engaged. But you've got to think about it, the tribes in a budget crunch right now, you're going to send two people to NCAI for five thousand dollars, and you're going to have to cut your social service programs. I mean, that is a reality, and those social service programs are the people, the people you serve out here that might not get a light bill paid. They're, they're thinking of cutting line, buying it from the national budget. We've got to be careful on our money. So, when you go up, you go and you represent the tribe, bring something back that's going to serve the people. I haven't seen it. I appreciate Daryl, Daryl's report on the veterans and all the information that's out there. He's going to bring that back, he's going to get with the veterans, they're going to try to set up something for the people. I don't see you doing that, Bruce. I see you traveling all over the place, and I don't know how it's affecting our people here. And the money that you're spending is coming out of tribal coffers. When those monies come out of the tribal coffers, it affects our women, our children, our families. So, when you go, I'm telling you, better be bringing something back that's going to serve our people, because I'm getting tired of hearing about you going here and there and not bringing anything back. So, that's what I have to say.
All right. So, the motion made? Waiting for a motion? Waiting for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the request for travel.
Motion is made, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and second, it's called for the vote.
I didn't get who did the second, I'm sorry. Dawn. Thank you, Dawn. Daryl Watson?
Yes.
Trish Ray? Yes. And Joan Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Exon?
Yes.
Dawn Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
All right, that's approved, so let's move on to item number eight, Pawnee Nation College Presidential Report.
Good evening. Thank you. Sorry. Should be green or yellow?
Green.
I don't, I'd like to bring it to my meeting, it's distracting.
The greatest event we had was our graduation just a couple weeks back, and then we're still pursuing our fall schedule, we should know something by June 15th, the approval with Baycom on our fall schedule. And that, we'll announce that and advertise it as soon as we have the approval from Baycom. As all of you know, our assistant college, one that gives us accreditation over all our classes, is Baycom. It's by articulation, and we have to meet their standards in order to meet accreditation standards from the Higher Learning Commission. We do have two students that we're gonna announce this as a second year. There was two students that went to OU again for a summer research internship in the sciences, second student, we'll find out tomorrow. We'll take them down to OU tomorrow, they're there for two weeks and bring them back. And this is an outreach program from OU through their science research project, they're reaching out all around Oklahoma, other states for native students to encourage them into the field of sciences, or STEM as it's called, science, technology, engineering, and that. So, that's been a door opener for us, and some of our students are beginning to catch on, to be, to become aware of it, to get interested, and trying to work hard to keep their grades up and keep their knowledge in the area of science. And so, I'm not sure the dates, I'm told we had a visit from, I guess, the earthquake engineers or repair people who came over and said that sometime in June, the college staff orders or administration building we've worked on, so we'll have a flex schedule there, we don't have enough office area for everybody, so we'll be working on the new schedule, but we'll have the other building that I'm working on. Summer classes start June 12th, so I think that would be a good time redoing that, because once school is in session, we just keep going along. So, we're still currently accepting any enrollees for summer session and in the fall. People are calling, we've got a lot of students on scholarships now, so we've told them, come on by and drop your enrollment in, whatever you need to do, because I believe, Mr. Night Chief Andrew, I don't know the closing date for scholarship applications to the tribe, we've been told June 1st or something?
I think it's June 6th.
June 6th?
Yeah, I'll give you the number.
Yeah, well, Stacy knows it, but again, we have a flex schedule going on because this is the only time to take vacations in between the semesters, so I allow people one day here, one day, we're all taking days here and there so we can get some break. So, we'll be open though next week, and then again, at the top of my report, for all of the business council members and the new members especially, we're having a special session on June 9th, we're gonna start at 10:00 AM, and that session will be, presenting will be Dr. Brown from Baycom, Mr. Robert Bible from Musco Buc Nation College, and Mr. Pete Poser, retired local state university, formerly with the Buc Nation Higher Learning Commission Office. And their discussion will be for all of you all to understand the Higher Learning Commission standards to meet accreditation and what the process is that we're gonna be walking through to bring Mr. Night Chief and you, Mrs. Cray, up to SNU. In 2011, the college had applied for what's called preliminary information form, a PIF letter, and in that letter you present all your credentials about meeting accreditation. About a year later in 2012, sometime in the summer, the Higher Learning Commission responded to us and stated that the college was not ready to even apply for accreditation because of that, a few things to meet the total standards. However, on top of that, they went from 13 standards to 19, and so those standards involved a lot of community networking, community support, student body, governmental body, board trustees, and staff. So, we're gonna start at ground zero, and this has been the whole matter of discussion and understanding for the last few years that we had to start back at ground zero because once we went into it, we weren't entirely ready, so they said, save your money. Initially, it's gonna cost $50,000 to pay for the visitors to come down, and what they do is they send various administrators from other colleges, or one or two persons from the Higher Learning Commission to come down and review our books, it's a simple way to say it. They review everything we've done, from classroom instruction, testing materials, credentials of our instructors, our policies, procedures, and our financial management. And so, all of that has to be handled by the college and its administrative staff. So, these three gentlemen have walked through that process, and most notably, Musco Buc Nation, when they started out planning in 2008, four or eight, they've achieved accreditation late last fall. It takes time and it takes a lot of effort on the administrative staff to get these things in place and set them in place. And so, that's where we want you all to understand what the process is gonna be, so it'd be enlightening for all of you that can be there to be there to really understand what we're gonna be walking through in the next two to five years. It's not easy, it's not simple, because everything is, it's all a matrix. Angela's talking about budgets, and those budgets they work with from one region to the 14 regions, a lot of things get ordered out, and the majority of things that you want locally don't meet the national average or whatever, and that's what Congress is looking at, so just think about Higher Learning Commission is our Congress now, so we've got to start walking on that path that they're gonna lay out for us, and that takes travel, that takes information, and it takes a lot of time on administration. And remind you, I'm administrator one and a half, the other half is sometimes Stacy, is sometimes Amber. So, all of the things that we have to do as a college to meet these standards will require increase, and I know budget crunch time is around the corner for everybody. So, we're looking out and trying to do other things and being mindful of these connections, we're making the OSU and OU, they weren't there four or five years ago, but they're coming in now and beginning to see our dedication and how we're sticking to the plan and accreditation, and the increase in our enrollment. And we're reaching out to do more certificate classes, so we're trying to establish two more, and we'll be talking about that with the city and their old hospital here at our next board meeting. Mayor Sewell is on our board, he's bringing some of the concepts to us, see how we can network training and income and helping the city and doing medical training at the same time. So, we've got these things going on, and it's a lot of thought process. So, I'll be brief right there, if you've got any questions or concerns?
Yes, sir.
So, you put this PIF letter in in 2011, the college is not accredited?
Not by our, by ourselves, no.
Is it accredited by either?
It's accredited by Baycom. We have what's called articulation agreement, all our classes, all the syllabi, the books, primary books, let's put it that way, and then all of our staff have to meet the same requirements as if Baycom is hiring.
Sure.
So, we meet their standards, they agree to give accreditation to our classes, so when our students go through their ceremonies, they credit their graduation time, they receive a certificate from us and one from Baycom for associates of arts in their field, whether it's business or American Indian studies.
And you said it might take five years from now to even get that?
It could, the average is three to get your, what they call, start off with self-study, and then you network with HLC back and forth. After that self-study, you line out everything you have that you say you mean accreditation, then you send a PIF letter. Then after that PIF letter, they schedule a visit, that could be six months or a year after you get the PIF, because they review all your documents first. Your documents, they did tell you, so.
What's the advantage of having your own accreditation versus using Baycom?
One, you receive federal funding, it doesn't go on to Baycom. We would be able to give out grants, loans, and scholarships that come to us, and then that money that you captured there, on top of this administrative fee, you capture that and keep it internal. Right now, Baycom captures all that, could be 5%, that could be 10%. And with Baycom, we have to split revenue from what's called tuition, we split it 50/50 with Baycom after all the bills are paid. So, let's say we have 40 students enrolled, average $5,000 a student per semester, what is that? You know, 200,000, 40,000, whatever, and then after the bills are paid, sometimes $15,000 to $25,000 for administration, healthcare, insurance, books, fees, and tuition. After that, we may earn $20,000 to $30,000.
Are students eligible for any of the stuff that goes through Baycom?
Yes.
Okay. So, are students still eligible for that stuff and their degrees are still from an accredited institution?
Yes, and so, Baycom is a part of the statewide Oklahoma region system as an independent body. They're the only college, as I've said, any independent college is the only one that can share revenue with us. The reason that they went with NOC earlier because NOC had industry studies program, Northern Oklahoma College, but Northern Oklahoma College could not share revenue with us. So, Pony Nation College became a feeder college for them, and they dictated who could do what where. In this manner with Baycom, we have a working agreement, and then as we want to add classes or expand classes, Baycom says, as long as you meet our standard, as long as you meet our requirements for teacher certification or degrees, syllabi, and works, that's fine. So, we've been able to expand into liberal studies as opposed to just American Indian studies.
So, you're saying that the expense that's gonna be involved with getting accredited, you're gonna recoup that by getting more direct funds?
Yes, if we get accreditation, we probably can be up to 100 students per semester as opposed to 40 average that we have now, and all the tuition.
And that would be because why?
Because we keep the tuition and we're accredited, we keep all tuition, all fees, everything financial we would keep, we don't have to split with Baycom. That would double our income if we had to support students, we keep all of it.
All right. Quit.
Mr. Burgess, I didn't see any financial information on your report, if you could kind of give us a brief summary of what's your, I know in your last report you said you were applying for some grants, what's the status of those grants? What's the status of your, or your financial status going in because of, you know, in one of the reports we were looking at some, there's, in your report you were talking about possible not offering classes and things like that, furloughs and things like that, so can you speak to that? Is that?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay.
We did a furlough, just one person, we were gonna shut down for the summer based on what DOI told us because of funding. However, what happened is we talked with them and we said, we want to help our seniors, we have nine or 12 students who would graduate either end of this summer or end of next semester. We've not received official word, back to the funding, we've not received official word, we got the word rumor that we're gonna be refunded. Now, I think recently, all of you might have received an email from myself or Stacy asking for letters of support, your letters of support hint on us being refunded. For all NACT programs, the number of support letters going to those who are gonna be refunded is way down, less than 20% from last year when they asked for the same kinds of letters. So, we need.
How many, how many, a letter from each of us or just one from the council?
Each of you can be fine, one from the council's even greater.
Can you provide us a draft?
I can send that by email, yes.
Yes, please, please do so now, each participant.
I think, Donna, did you get one? Did I send one to you today? I had a few addresses that I sent on forward, a sample, and I reached out to all the tribal college people that I had to, the other administrators to them as well.
Okay, well, we can get that to me, I'll get it to you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, that's why, that's the deadline, yes, sir.
So, just off the top of your head, what percentage of your budget is with federal grants?
99.99%.
And so, there's changes that are occurring in the government right now that's gonna potentially affect your funding?
Potentially, yes. The grant that we're receiving will be our fifth year, technically it was a two-year, due to elections, they processed it another year, then the last year, they went ahead and grandfathered us the third time, the second time, we've been grandfathered again. This is the same grant that the college began in 2007, and again, we are another, one of the schools, we've exceeded our planned numbers of success, if you wanna call it that, and in fact, we're receiving on our visit from our evaluator here, the 7th of June, and we'll have another report at that time by the night, it should be done. But preliminary, we're achieving 125% of our goal, and it's based on certificate courses, so we're trying to expand into these certificate courses. The office that funds, it's out of Department of Education, but it's titled Native American Career Technical Education Programs, and this is a project that's designed to take people either, train them into a workforce, whether they're already employed or new employed, as well as encourage them to go on with their education. So, what has happened for us, we've got into the medical area, certified nursing assistants, certified medical aid, now they're trying to expand it into taking the medical coding classes. So, they're into anatomy now, physiology, and the next class we're trying to add is when they take blood samples, the body, that's the next thing we're looking at, but we have to hire a nurse to do that. Currently, we don't have the funding for that, so we send them up to Pioneer Technology Center in Pompa City, and that's paid for by the grant, everything's covered through the grant and arguing with them, so our students are opinion, we have two to three students average per class, by sections.
Do you have to have a certain percentage of your students doing technical stuff?
No, but the more we have, the better it is because our numbers increase.
So, you don't have to have a certain?
Don't have to have them, but it helps us to fall in line with the goals of that office.
So, you don't have to be a technical school?
No, you have to be what we are, is a tribal established college or technical school.
All right.
How soon do you need that letter?
Well, I just got, got on the email again, the deadline is tomorrow, and I have, I have, let me text Stacy now, I never sent it to you, I'll text it before I involve, so unless you, Donna, or do you have Stacy's email? She has a sample letter that went out, and she can forward it to all of you all.
Maybe in the future you could just maybe send it to Ms. Butler?
I did send one to her, yesterday, today, I don't know if Stacy sent it, went over to you.
Send it out or draft something for us.
Well, I didn't do, the deadline was just Friday.
In a timely manner too, because, I mean, it's difficult, maybe not, I personally, me, I don't like giving things a day before because I don't have time to read it, review it, so you just.
All right, well, we've been, Stacy's been knocking on everybody's door last week, so it was, mad at my side, I had to, as soon as she notified all of them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I kind of prefer to have the back before I do stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing on the out of this one.
Well, I don't even have your email, so, but something coming from the president of the council would be great. I think he did one for us last year.
He did?
Yeah.
All right, well.
Thank you, Mr. Backt, you're answering a question about percentage of funding, we've averaged $400,000 on the grants for a year, and Angela was asking about the other grants, Angela, there will be August, at the earliest, we hear on the four other grants we've applied for, and our deadlines, our A&amp;A will be June 22nd, so again, those are still in place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will move to item number nine, which is the AV report. Andrew Backt.
Good evening.
We've had quite a bit go on here lately, one of the first things I wanted to talk about was obviously the budget issue facing. For me, it's not dire yet, we're still gathering all the hard data, we're looking at all the available resources we have on hand, and then we'll come up with potential strategies to deal with the IT budget, and we'll also look for ways to generate revenue because I think that's the key to not only our survival in the near term, but definitely our survival in the long term. You know, one of the things that I looked at in a lot of these programs, a lot of these meetings I've been having with my staff, is the fact that we need to start looking at revenue generating ideas and encouraging directors to look for ways to capture more revenue, whether we do that through developing businesses or different kinds of LLCs, partnerships, whatever, joint ventures, we should look to do that, we have a few programs within our nation that have that ability, Taral would be one of them, to, especially, I think they're mandated and they're ordinance to start businesses, I think it says that Taral shall start business enterprises. One of the problems with that is it hasn't been well defined, so, you know, we need to give the Taral Commission to promulgate some rules and regulations to help define what exactly that means to. to help define what exactly that means to develop a business entity. Because that can mean a lot of things. It can be fun, it can be actually run, so we'll have to look at all those things. You know, I've been on the radar with this budget issue for probably the last two and a half, three months. We started with having staff meetings probably two months ago. We have one, we tried to have one every week, but the schedule probably is average about every two weeks we get together. We get more numbers, we get more data. It takes a little bit of time to gather all that data together. And again, it's including what we know about, what we have on hand that's reported in MIP. But it's also looking at other accounts that may be out there. My staff and I have been able to find some more money out there. So that's always good, we turn over every rock. You know, one of the things about generating revenue on your own is it enables a tribe to weather these changes in administrations a lot better. I don't know if you all got the new budgets yet from the president's office, but the projections are pretty... There's significant cuts across the board. And those have impacts on our programs, especially our service programs. That's where it's most felt because all of our service programs are on federal dollars. And, you know, any kind of hit to liability for CHR will make an impact. So we're going to have meetings. I know that the treasurer, she's tried to get a meeting together with council members being invited and the staff so we can kind of exchange information and start working on a plan. And I think we do have one, I think it's June 1st. June 1st is going to be the first kind of meeting associated with that, so you're all welcome to come if you want to. We're going to be looking at hard numbers and start to do brainstorming and strategy.
Andrew, if I may ask you that?
Yes, ma'am.
I, we met at the last budget committee and decided on June 1st. So I hope, and it's at 10 o'clock at the conference room. So I hope, I hope all of y'all can attend, but if you can't, I understand. But we're going to be discussing the revenue that's out there, the reserve and going into 20... Finishing out 2017 and going into 2018 and what that's going to look like. So I hope you all can...
It's at 10?
Yes, I hope you all can make it.
And right now, it's my impression, you know, speaking with our finance director, that the issue is really going to be fiscal year 18 because there's a lot of unknowns there with the past. And we don't know what the Trump administration is going to do with the numbers and the budget. A lot of our funding agencies usually give us heads up by now about what their projected funding is going to be for fiscal year 2018, if everything's kind of frozen about, you know, any movement towards passing a budget. So we're kind of working in the blind as well. I think, I think there's an eight to 12 month period where we're going to have to really look to tighten our belt straps. Right now, projections from TDC and Mr. Smith, you know, he told me that they're very conservative projections. So that could be a good thing for us. But we project to be revenue neutral again at the start of the fourth quarter of 2018. So we're really looking at an eight to 12 month span where, you know, we need to, you know, look at ways and develop strategies to kind of save money across the board. So again, it's not dire, it's not the end of the world stuff. It's just, you know, we have to be responsible money managers. Again, this goes back into the comprehensive ag plan. I think it's absolutely, absolutely of utmost importance that we as a nation push a comprehensive agricultural plan. We have the hard numbers, we have the hard numbers of what it would... These things will generate revenue for us, greenhouses will generate revenue for us. We've started market research. Janie Hip and HL Goodwin, who work for the Ag Enterprise Institute, I think is in Arkansas, Hoover Springs, Arkansas. They are giving us a proposal tomorrow. I think HL said he's going to give us a proposal. What they're going to do is more of the economic impact statements. They're going to do the market resource on the economy things and access that we don't have alone necessarily. We have all the skill sets for the times to gather that kind of information. But we've done the kind of research that we can do from here. We've already had our land surveys done, we have the NRCS coming soil samples and ecological inventories. We've already started doing land management like burning fields for our overgrowth. We're going to continue to do that. We're going to start with the fencing plan. We're going to cut down cedar trees. We're going to do the things that we can do, that I know we can do right now to prep our land, to do whatever we want to do with it. And hopefully, hopefully sooner rather than later because, you know, everybody I've talked to, as a matter of fact, Stephen Bond was here yesterday or the day before yesterday. He's from the Intertrial Ag Council. He's an expert, he's a master gardener. He's got all the training that you want. He advises tribes, he's been working very closely with the OSAC here lately about developing agricultural plans. And he's already put together, you know, even small greenhouses. He had a two greenhouse, was like 30 by 40 or something, or 20 by 30. It's a real small greenhouse, doing nothing but tomatoes and lettuce. And I think projected revenues were, you know, 20,000 for tomatoes and about 60,000 for lettuce. So these things can be done. It's just going to take a little bit of courage on our part to do them. You know, one of the things that I looked at was how do we exactly go about this? And it turns out that we don't have all of the governing documents needed in order to start a business. So I put some other stuff on hold to develop the governing documents needed. Specifically, corporation documents that deal with limited liability corporations, partnerships, joint ventures, and a lot. The only document that we have, only law that we have on the books is our Business Corporation Act. But we don't, we're not going to develop another TDC here. This is just for developing a small, a small business. We're not going to have huge boards, we're not going to have all of the things that our Business Corporation Act calls for. So we really pushing this, I'm working heavily with Brian, planning director, to get this plan through. And it's going to be a joint effort. We're going to incorporate the data we get from Janie Hip and HL and just push forward with it as we have to. That being said, my goals still remain unchanged. Leadership is still on top of my list. We getting ready to have our second leadership, Ponte Nation Leadership Development Course, middle of June. Start with managers and then do division directors again. We have, you know, records management is still another goldmine. I still have trouble tracking down all of our pertinent documents when I meet them. It takes quite a bit of effort sometimes to get ahold of even simple documents. And that's just because everything gets scattered around here. So we need to start organizing and collect them. Easier said than done though, because I have three staff and our records are spread out all over the nation. And without any kind of organization done in the past, it's literally... They said, you go find the document for me, and then she disappears for four hours and comes back. Well, I'm going to go here and then she's having to thumb through individual boxes and forth. So, you know, we need to come up with a plan to deal with that. And we started to develop the plan for that. Our division directors are on it. Start with them, start with our departments first and smallest increment and just build our way up. And we think it can be done. Well, actually, it has to be done. Revenue, I've already talked about revenue. Bison is part of the comprehensive ag plan. Reached out to Intertrial Ag Council soon. The efficiency is still looking at all of the kind of government policies and government structure and organizational structure and try to find ways to make them better. One of the things that I saw was an efficiency, it's kind of like how we name our, some of our departments over. We name them after the grants. Well, that kind of limits about what that department does. If they're just there to be a grant manager, well, then it kind of limits their ability to grow. And so I'm looking at ways to change organizational chart. I've got things with Bureau of Review, my administrative assistant, or my administrative admin affairs director, to go through these organizational chart changes that we need to make for efficiency purposes. One of the things I was talking about, for example, is like ICVG. That doesn't need to be, that doesn't need to be a department. We need to have an infrastructure development department, an ICVG grant as a component part of that. Because we want, we want Reva to, and Brian to administer more than just the ICVG grant and leverage as many grants as you can to make the maximum impact and value for our nation. One of the things that I've noticed, we have projects out there, is because there's no city planning and rural planning. We get a grant and we have to develop everything from scratch. Bring in sewer lines, bring in power lines, bring in water lines. It makes the cost of projects high. So if we get an office of infrastructure development or rural economic development, whatever we want to call it, then they can go after, in their minds, they'll go after other grants that, like USDA grants that help with infrastructure development and just kind of incorporate tailoring of the ICVG. But that's just one example. We have a multiple, especially in the EHCS, that kind of make things a little bit unbuilding. So we're looking at that as well. I've got a lot to say, it's been a while since I've been in council, so bear with me. We have the earthquake. We met with the adjuster, Jimmy Justice and I, we met with the adjuster a week and a half ago. He apologizes, his name is J. B. Bullock. He apologizes for the time limit, but the time it's taken to do this plane. But to his credit, you know, he told us that we've had to outsource the expertise to California because we don't have it here in the state of Oklahoma. So a lot of it's been taking time, finding the right people then to come in and do the adjustments in the proper way. This is their first, their first go around as an insurance company in Oklahoma dealing with earthquakes. So we're getting ready to get the final numbers and the check should be issued very soon. The final report went to the man, the guy that writes a check to us. So we're waiting, we were supposed to probably hear something by tomorrow, maybe next week. And then once we get the funds, then we'll sit down with Coots or whoever decides who they're seeing and move forward with the construction plan. Even though we've actually got the plan in place, we're just going to have to just implement. So that's, that's good. The one thing that really changed the game for us as a nation was the leaders' testing. That really, we knew it was kind of there, but we didn't know exactly what the environmental engineers were going to say about it and how they wanted us to evade it. But definitely increase the cost of the overall renovations because it's quite substantial. The good news is, is it's not airborne, it's just in the walls. We have done the environmental hygiene, air quality monitoring with the buildings and if the levels of leaders' test are way, 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 way below permissible exposure limits. So it's just in the walls, but we have to, we have to do it anyway, we have to debate it. So it's going to raise the cost of renovations. Land management, of course, continues to be an issue for us. Like I said, we're going to control burns. We've removed some of the buildings out here that I've identified as the most hazardous. The bakery building behind the building CC4 and the residential home on Big League Drive. We have had, as executive director, we've had reports of kids in those buildings and they are falling apart. They were dangerous, so we had to remove those, those buildings for the safety of the nation and the people that live there. Also, with tribal land management, you know, we talked about the trust land, we're hitting land in the trust of Nebraska. We have now had official word that the Department of Interior is ceasing putting land in the trust that is in our ancestral lands. So a tribe seeking to put land in the trust of ancestral homelands, the DOI is not doing this anymore. They're not operating there anymore. We're going to try to make the argument that we were in the process to begin with so that we should be grandfathered in some way, continue with that process, but we'll just see. The DOI is still putting land in the trust within our jurisdiction, but they're not doing it in our ancestral lands. No explanation, it's just, that's what it is. So that kind of throws a wrench in our processes here as it comes to Nebraska. But we'll find a way, we'll find a solution and we'll do it. Continue to updating policy, beginning the process to monitor the tribal law and codes as part of the LLC process and all that. We're continuing to work with Herb Justice in our, we're continuing to work with Scott Poynner. Just like the council, I was in a war for the Attorney General, but the federal government filed a motion to dismiss. It was expected, nothing unusual about that, we're still receivable beginnings of the case. The Russian dismiss, I think, was based upon a Thode State claim and exhaustion of the ministry for evidence to have a go-to motion to dismiss things. Herb Justice has informed that, they're providing responses. We speak on things due to 29 per few as one of our answers that our motion dismissed is supposed to be. And we've got out service to all, to the defendants in our lawsuit here in tribal court services. But now we're waiting on the answers to, sorry. Again, so that's part of the preparing the nation for the long effort to restore our rights to our land and water. This is just the beginning, council, this is not the end, it's just the beginning. One of the things that I'm developing and that I am going to caution you all as council members, and I promise you I will give you plenty of time to look over before we even take it up as a council, is an oil and gas action. I've been working on one for months now. It's comprehensive. There's no easy way to make a oil and gas statute that is pithy. They're all monsters and behemoths. So this one is not going to be any different. But what it's going to do is it's going to capture those people within our jurisdiction that are violating our tribal laws on a daily basis. It's also going to help with revenue generation. I mean, there's only so many ways that a government can earn revenue for its operations. And to help offset the cost of doing enforcement out, like sending Monty and Josh and Kelly out there to do enforcement, it costs us money to do that. And one of the few ways we can do that is by permitting licensing, use taxes. So I'm developing a statute that will capture those enterprises. I mean, right now, we're up to 12 permits, two licenses, multiple fees, all reasonable. All with the effect of just compensating the nation for the, like, if we're getting to a sticker for transportation oil, if we want to sticker those vehicles that are coming on their land. We just want a reasonable fee that covers our admin costs and prices sticker. So we're not, we're not out here to try to give it to any particular one industry. We're just out here to cover our expense, what it costs us to go out and enforce our tribal laws within our jurisdiction. But I do, and you want to reiterate, it is comprehensive. I think right now it's up to 74 pages. And that's just one, that's just one statute, so. But it'll be worth it. You know, we've done a lot of research on, looked at a lot of different tribes, looked at a lot of different states. And I think we've captured what each of those things does best and put it into our statute and make it work for us. Because it has to be enforced and to last be implementable, otherwise it goes aways. So with that, I've been writing statutes. And with all that, do I have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I did notice on the way in today, but what's the status of cleaning out where they burnt that Merton mort house?
It's been removed.
Everything's, it's all cleared?
Yeah, I wanted to do it last week, but we had heavy rains and so the equipment kept getting stuck and tearing up the land. So we waited till this week and it's just finally removed and they covered it over with dirt.
Great, great. And I also wanted to clarify on, you know, Andrew's report on the revenue is a little bit different than mine because I feel we are in dire. I do, you know. But I think we'll have the hard numbers next week when we meet. But we already went into 2017 with a shortfall. You all are already aware of the TDC shortfall as well. So when it's reported to me by our finance director that we're already dipping into our reserve, that concerns me. So that's where I'm coming from. That's where I'm coming from because I didn't want you all to think that we're missed, you know, that we're not on the same page. I think we are, but knowing that we're already in a $300,000 shortfall going into 2017 and then hearing information that we've already, we're already dipping into some reserve, we have to have 900,000 to, in the bank, federal dollars. And so looking at all that, it concerns me. And so that's where I'm coming from. And he's seen, he's seen a lot more information. So I think once we come together as a council and budget committee with all the research that him and the finance department, I appreciate... and budget committee with all the research that him and the finance department, I appreciate all they've done, bring it back, we'll have a better, clearer understanding where we may be. So I didn't want any conflict.
I don't think there's a conflict, it's just, you know.
In the information?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Yes, ma'am.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So on the records, are you talking about centralizing them in one place or just indexing, identifying and indexing?
Identifying and indexing.
Okay.
We don't really have a storage facility yet, you know, one of the things that I would, my mind is, you know, if we can get that IHS clinic, old IHS clinic basement retrofitted to be a collection and a man and archive, that'd be great, but, you know, again, the funds being available, that's the issue. So the first step is just to organize and identify, that's the first step. And eventually, eventually, you know, we'll have everything scanned in and ready to go, but scanning documents into, using the equipment that we have, which aren't really professional scanners, they're like little Packard printers, they're three or more printers, it takes a while to scan a folder of documents. Cindy knows better than I do because she's tried to scan. Now, from, Cindy, when did you start scanning and all that stuff? When you started working?
I was, yeah.
So by the time, when Cindy started working in the executive office, everything that's come into has been scanned and organized. So that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about the historical record, the historical archive stuff. That's still permanent.
So earlier on, somebody made a comment about going to the band meeting, Joey Band, they talked about Bison and Ag stuff, but there's not two separate entities pursuing this, is there?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, getting back to your documents, right? Control.
I know.
Control. They can't be in different departments, you have to maintain them in one area. Even if you're not scanned, at least have them available and then they can scan them or copy them right from there.
Problem is you don't even know where they're at, right?
Yeah, they don't.
And we have two phases, we have two sets of documents to talk about here. We have documents since I've been here, the directors have gotten the word, they are organizing and maintaining the records. 2015 and '04, I can't be so confident, I mean, I've had trouble looking for, I mean, it took us, I'd say six months just to find a copy of our Business Corporation Act, and that's like tribal law. So we, I've identified the weaknesses and we're going to address it, it's just going to take some time, so.
All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Oh, oh, sorry, can I add one more thing?
Mr. President.
The land buyback program. Everybody's, and I, this is under my stack of stuff, so I apologize. We have new direction from John McPloughan, the director of the land buyback program for tribal nations. They are doing what they're calling a strategy review right now. They write, "As we announced in the Federal Register, new department leadership is taking a fresh look at our partners and analyzing strategies that would further maximize consolidation of land." During the strategy review program, or during the strategy review, the program intends to move forward with implementation of the locations where a fully executed agreement has been reached with the tribe. Programs that don't have fully executed agreements are further. Basically what they're saying is if you've already started the process, if you're in the process of buying back land now, you'll finish it out. Any other tribe that's waiting, it's going to be pushed off. We were looking at, we were looking at the middle or end of summer to get our notice of this year, and with the start of the buyback in '18.
May of '18.
It may be longer now, because they're putting a whole other thing, so.
They want the letter of intent.
We've got the letter of intent. Yeah, I think we sent everything that we needed to send and we've been in contact with those folks and.
There was something in email just now, I just read it, that it came out that they're wanting a letter of intent by the end of the month, by the 31st.
From us?
Mm-hmm.
Did you get that email? We got it.
I'll send it back over to you.
Okay.
I'm not going to turn this on until after. I kept bringing.
Yeah, please, if you have something for me, like I said, it's fascinating and it's hard to get.
I just read it, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Andrew. We have Don Mason's report, please sit down, are there any questions or?
Two items I would like to add to that, and that is, one thing I left as I am working on an LLC and an LLP section to add to our corporation statute. I continue to work with Andrew on oil and gas statute, he is correct, it is getting monstrous. He and I are on the same page with most of it, I think we're quite there, I don't think we're quite there on the fines section. I would like to see fines a little bit higher. I don't like the idea of some of these people committing negative acts and then we break them, take them in the court and they can easily, some of these people can easily write a $5,000 debt. I want to keep them a little bit harder. So other than that, I think we're on the same page. So that's two items I'll just add to your report.
I have a couple of questions real quick. On Pawnee Nation, the BIA and BLM, you had in your report, you said, "My feeling is the Pawnee Nation will either defeat the federal government's motion to dismiss." I would like more information on the specifics, what's your argument for that? And, I mean.
Well, Mike Freeman and I are working on this with you. And when we have our response to the government, what I'll do is, is when I file that, I'll make sure that each member of the council has a copy of that and I outline it all.
Okay, great. One other one on Pawnee Nation, on the transportation program, it's, I guess there's been an ongoing contract dispute?
The petition was filed today.
Okay, great. How long has that been going on? Because this is really the first I've heard of it.
Oh, it's been going on a while. Chris has went round and round and round with these people. I sent numerous letters to them. And all of those letters, I told them titles of the assets and the police be in touch with us.
Okay.
They ignored us on every one of them. And so I'm left with not much other than to go forward, and I fully expect we're going to get a judgment. And I will warn the council what I'm afraid of, and I've already warned Chris of this, that is, we'll get the judgment and then this guy, I think what he's going to do is he may run off the bankruptcy court and then our judgment might not be, well, I'll make sure that our judgment is in line, but the problem though is that through very few assets, we may only get nickels or dimes on the dollar. What we really want though, in addition to that, is our work product. We pay for work product, we need our work product. He's dragging his feet on our, getting our work product back.
Does tort claims coverage cover this contract? I mean, because these are federal dollars.
Yeah, I know. And I'm wondering, I could think the same thing, counselor, because this, when you're talking about federal dollars, you're getting some tall weeds in.
Right.
And I don't think we're the only ones that he has been contracting with. I know that he's also had some issues with the city.
Okay.
So, same thing.
I'd be interested to know if the tort claims coverage applies, and I don't know what, how much we're looking at, the cost associated with this contract dispute.
Chris really wants that work product.
Okay, yeah, that would be optimal. The next question on the tax commission, I noticed that you're working on the Articles of Incorporation. Just a request, I would like to have those articles way ahead of time, before we come into council, because we get the packet maybe two days before, but something like that, we would need something, more time to review that.
Yeah, the Articles of Incorporation, also keep in mind, remember, we talked about our corporation statute, and one thing that the council has never really explored or exercised is the fact that underneath that 1984 statute, any corporation, any articles, has to be approved by council, even if they're private parties. So I have to get it approved by you anyway, and second of all, I want to make sure I get it to you way ahead of time. Keep in mind, these articles may be simple, I'm not going to go exotic on this, because I'm just in the planning stages of getting other Indian nations on board. And then once we do that, then we can develop a more healthy and robust articles.
Okay. On the Pawnee Nation and the IHS contract dispute, that claim that we filed in 2011, what are the amounts that you are talking at this point?
Well, that has to do with, remember the agreement that we made with IHS via telephone, with the, I guess that was about two months ago? Basically what I'm doing now is I'm working with the attorney at IHS to enforce that agreement. What we have to do is I have to apply for those funds, I have to be turned down, then I, we've already done that, then I have to make an appeal. When I make an appeal, then the appeal is turned down, and when the appeal is turned down, then that, under the statute, brings me up to go into negotiation with IHS. We've already done.
You've already gone through negotiations?
Yes.
What's the amount?
$137.
Plus interest, right?
Yeah. And remember, that was the amount that we all agreed to via telephone on that conference a few months ago.
Yeah, because I think the, I think the original amount that we had estimated was $180,000.
$180,000, yeah.
IHS initially gave us a $70,000 number, and during the negotiations, we got it to $137 and interest.
We didn't get all of the money, but we're in.
We had a large chunk.
The problem with it though, counselor, is this, and that is with, and I've discovered this with this civil board of appeals, their wheels run at about one or two miles per hour, they are extremely slow, so it had to be better.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the Board of Contract Appeals, so. The next question, Pawnee Nation Gaming Commission, it's that your report states that you're doing MOUs. I didn't understand what type of MOUs and why.
I'm in the, well, to be honest with you, I'm in the process of figuring that out myself. I've had Arthur talk to me, and I've had, I believe, tax commission themselves approach me about wanting to do some MOUs. What I needed to do is I needed to sound that out with them, because they came to me and said they want to do them, but they really hadn't went into the details about what time and why, and how do you want to structure this. And I'm with you, and that is, before we just jumped into an MOU, we need to make sure that, do we need it? And another thing too, is we need to make sure that it's airtight.
And we need to make sure the article's allowed for.
Exactly. Got that right, too.
Yes, okay. I think that's... Okay, one more question, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
City of Pawnee, you talked about the easement, and your report states passing across Pawnee Nation trust property now is, and then you mentioned two families that are involved as well. Is it the families that have trust property, or is it Pawnee Nation's trust property, or both?
Well, there's four tracks, four lawparks. We have interest in one or two of them.
Two.
And the other two are just heirs.
Yeah.
But this is dealing with the main water line, I think it's like, they said, 24-inch line that runs from City of Pawnee Lake to their treatment center.
Yeah.
It's been in trespass since 1982, the easement was granted in 1937, or 1932.
37.
37.
37.
And expired in 1982.
Yep.
And they've been in trespass since then, they've gone through the appraisal process and all that.
Well, I don't know about that, that is, they're starting the appraisal process.
Well, it's a 2014, they have an appraisal.
They're going to have to do it, they're going to have to do it.
Okay.
And the thing about that, counselor, is that you have, the Pawnee Nation, I think, is willing to go to the table and negotiate with the parties. The other parties asked us really to come in in an effort to try to help, help sound out the issues with these families. And so I think that's really going to be more of our role. And the thing too, counselor, is, is like Andrew said, this has been in trespass since 1982. This is not the first time they've attempted to negotiate.
No violations have been issued on that trespass?
Not on the BIA, not on the BIA side, because they've been trying to negotiate this for a while, it's just that it takes a while and then you get new heirs that come in and then it just, and, you know, one of the reasons why we're involved is because the state can't, the city can't condemn the land. Like, usually what they would do is try to negotiate if they can, and they would just do a combination proceeding and take the easement. They can't condemn tribal land.
Correct.
So we kind of have to get to the table, try to get negotiation done, so.
Okay. And you mentioned, one other question, you mentioned that there is payments, looking at payments to the affected families, but is there any potential revenue to the tribe?
Could be.
Okay.
But that would be a negotiation. Really, I'm not worried about us, the families, this has been hanging out there for years. One of the main reasons is because the parties, the governmental entities and the families have been in loggerheads for decades. So, you know, who knows?
Okay, thank you.
That's okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is Mulberry, what was that project?
That is the Sixth Street Project.
First Street.
First Street, First Street Project. And it's been, it was going well at first, but it went off the railroad tracks, but, well, I don't know about the railroad tracks, it went off the tracks. And it came to a standstill, and so then Chris McCray continued to reach out to them. A lot of this had to do with the planning process and doing the initial work on paper. And what happened was, and I think I can say this in open form, he had an exodus, the other side, Mr. Mulberry, had an exodus of a lot of employees. That's not the Pawnee Nation's problem, it's not transportation division's problem. And in the process of that happening, a lot of these projects that he's had, including the Pawnee Nations project, have been, I don't know, pushed to the side, so to speak, and now it's at the point where they've been ignored. And again, like I said, Chris attempted again and again to engage with them and get this thing going and to get our work product that we paid for. And then we're.
We weren't paying him for this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why would we do that?
Well, because they have to.
That was the contract, that was the contract that was made.
So what is our bidding for contractors, what is our bidding process? Do we run a DMV? Do we, do we really go to any lengths to ensure that we don't have fly-by-nights coming through here?
Yes, we do. I mean, we have an open and transparent bidding process, there's sealed bids that come in to us and we go through multiple layers, and with final approval being the Pawnee Business Council based on certain processes. It just happens that this particular firm lost a lot of folks, and the folks that left to a new firm or whatever, and I don't, it was definitely one of our guys, took digital work products.
I think I first said it.
Now, we have paperwork products, we have the finished drawings.
Yep.
But we can't proceed with the construction project with just paper, because the new CMs, the CMs that come in, the DOT, we have to be able to share digitally so we can add and incorporate different things into different files. So that's what we're missing.
I'm not a construction guy, but I do know this.
I certainly am, I either, but I mean, I have a sense for business, I think that's important.
Yeah. And see, I had nothing to do with this contract negotiation, that was done over transportation and all that.
But they were paid before the job was even done?
No, 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 they haven't, they haven't been paid in full yet, Counselor Eason, they were paid for the work part that we received, which was the blueprints.
Installments or whatever, right?
Yes.
Okay, I heard you phases.
And phases, so for each completion of a phase, we would get a piece of work part.
I heard you say, "Yeah, we paid them."
Well, and we did pay, we paid them for the digital file, because that's the next thing.
Yeah, and they, they're responsible for that digital work product. We own it, it's our work product and they need to supply it, and so that's where we're at.
I see. Thank you.
So what are your concerns that they could do, what contractors tend to do, and that's declare bankruptcy, change their name and move on?
That's what I'm afraid of.
Oh, yeah.
Which is contractors.
Yeah, and what's sad is, I think actually when the nation entered into this, there were no problems with Mulberry, but then as this thing developed, well, it was bad for them. And then when it went bad for them, indirectly it was bad for us.
So it's still a project that, like, they have completed at some point?
Oh, yeah, definitely. We just need to get past this hump and then move forward.
What project is it, what are they doing?
It's the First Street Project, Counselor Eason, it's the one where they're going to, we're going to tie in with the Department of Transportation ODOT project into, from Highway 18 and 64.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to tie in at the, pretty much at the wastewater treatment plant, and we're going to run a road with curbs and sidewalks on the side and a traffic light right there before the War Mothers Bridge. And we're going to run up First Street and then around through housing and then back up, we're going to add new roads, widened roads and sidewalks and curbs, and we're going to tie in with the ODOT project. And... And so that's the project. And we have, we have all the funds sitting in our trust account right now. We already have federal highway funds for that, so.
He just doesn't have the...
The digital.
The digital files, right? The ODOT guys need access with the digital files, too. And plus, the, the new A and E guys that we need to bring in to finish, complete the project, need it as well.
All right, just, I just got, so this Gaming Commission, think of this, MOU?
Yeah.
They just come up and say, we need an MOU. They don't give you any details of why they want it, what they want to accomplish?
How that comes about is this doctrine. That is, they come over to my office, and then they start talking about wanting to have new efficiencies, having a better relationship, getting along better. They talk in vague terms, and maybe MOUs might be a way of doing that. I haven't completely sounded that out, you know, yet, but, but, you know, what I call that initial talking, so to speak. And at times in the past, from at least from my perspective, there has been some tension there from time to time. It's not an everyday deal, but it, it does happen. And so I think they're thinking of ways to make the relationships better. And so, hey, you know, if I can do something to help them, okay. But I also have a duty to make sure that, you know, is this needed? And are we going to structure it in a way where it's going to be effective and actually produce some of these efficiencies and better relationships that they're talking about?
Just seems a little backwards, but that's just me.
Sometimes that happens.
Thanks. Well, thank you. All right, we, we're gonna move on to old business, but before we do, let's take a ten-minute break.
Two dollars a slice. We want the elders.
Two, two dollars a slice, elders only can buy, right? Chris.
Yes.
Somebody just give me a little brief synopsis of this project.
Brief synopsis?
Oh, he's walking up to the mic. Mr. Synopsis.
Brief.
Yeah, please. Brief. This was a fiscal year, two thousand and fifteen, ICBG project, which is Indian Community Development Block Grant, HUD. It provides eight hundred thousand dollars for community projects. We were awarded that grant. And it's a matching grant, so twenty percent needs to be matched. So it's usually twenty, or two hundred thousand dollars is what has to come from the tribe, just to, just to be eligible for the grant. And then we have five years to complete the project. We have one year, no, two years to spend eighty-five, or is it one year? Eighty-five percent of the funds, or is it two years? So two years to expend eighty-five percent of the funds, or we're not compliant. And the, the matching can come from all sources of, as a matter of fact, our matching is made up of eight kind services, property management, harbor transportation, and a lot of other things. So this pool project was a two thousand and fifteen ICBG grant. And the discussion today is centering around, you know, whether or not we can afford the project or not.
So this, this grant is not just for the pool, or other projects, or is it just for the pool?
This one is just for the pool. Like, each, each ICBG grant is for a specific grant objective.
So we've already been awarded a grant for a pool. We've already accepted that grant. Have we accepted any money yet from that grant?
Yes, for administrative, because you have to have money to do A and E and, and the preliminary stuff to...
So are we kind of forced to report on this thing?
No. No, I mean...
And what happens to money that we spend if we don't need one?
We have to pay the administrative funds that we expend.
Payback?
Payback. Which I think right now is thirty thousand.
And yes, and that's even, that's even a maybe. We can justify that, you know, there was work that was completed up to that point, we might not have to pay that payback.
But at the most, it'd be thirty thousand, that's what we pay back in administrative costs. Because we don't, we don't physically, I don't think have, physically have the funds in our accounts.
So it's eight hundred something thousand, grant?
It's, yeah, it's probably around eight hundred thousand.
And the estimates on the pool are over a million?
One point four is the, is option C. We had, we had three options developed, option A being C. Option A was two point four, which is being impacted. Option A was about two point three. Option B was two point one, and then option C was one point four million dollars. And I know, I know...
Six hundred thousand, as we made up somewhere.
Yeah.
On a tight budget here?
Yeah. We, we had this discussion, we've had this discussion now for a couple of months. It's come up, and a lot of it is concerned in the sustainability. But I want us to focus on just the construction costs, like, can we, can we even, can we break ground? Because that's, that's really the issue. I mean, the sustainability factor is part of it, but if you can't even, I mean, I don't know. It's my opinion, as a matter of fact, I mean, go looking through all the numbers, that's just, it's not feasible to do, there's just too much money.
So one point four is just to have a pool and put water in here? That money is the estimate, and that one point four is not lifeguards, corby?
No, 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 because we, we don't even get into sustainability. We're just talking about just the shovel work projects built, because it's... The other thing about ICBG that, that for the new council members that may not understand is that, you know, we have to stick with what we wrote for. And what we wrote for was a therapeutic pool, enclosed, and with certain amenities. And so we kind of have, now, there's some wiggle room with HUD. They allow some deviation from the initial grant objectives, depending on certain kids' need. But generally speaking, it has to be an enclosed pool for therapeutic purposes. And so that's kind of what we have to do. Now, we have some wiggle room around there, like the, you know, reduced even the lanes of the pool, the depth of the pool, that kind of thing.
But it's still, still one point four, and we have eight hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we discussed this quite a bit in Budget Committee. And, you know, I know we're executive director, Nancy, looking at the feasibility of it. And there's a lot of other things as well, is that ICBG projects may not, may not be any longer. This may be one of the, this one and the campground, if we do both, could be, potentially be the last two projects that we've, based on, you know, the politics of, of the national, of the national government level. And knowing that we had applied for this aquatic center, and when we got notice that we received it, even before that, I think the council is aware that I've been holding off on our reserves and hope, and saving those reserves for... So, because I knew we were going to have to put money into this project. And I want this project for the community. And I want, you know, and that's one reason why I've tried to build up the proceeds of labor and use our council budget to fund some of these other expenses that have came up instead of dipping into our reserves. And we've got, we've got about two point four eight million dollars in reserves with all the revenue sources that I'm, I'm aware of. And I think Andrew's found a little bit more in some other accounts.
Those are great.
Yeah, under rocks. And then the other things that are coming up as well. And, and so with that being said, I know that we are going into a budget crunch. But, you know, our, our goal as a council is to provide services to the people. And the people have, I've heard several people get up on, on council floor and say, we need something for our youth. We need something for our community. And so if there's any way, and we, and I believe in Budget Committee, we discussed the timeframe for when the money was going to be actually needed. And I think that it might be two years down the road, or we could, can we put it off a year or two down the road to come up with the majority of the money?
I think right now, I think when I first approached about maybe waiting, it was about the beginning of twenty eighteen when we really had to make a decision on this project because it affects those future, possibly future grants. And, you know, there's only so much stalling I can do on my implementation schedule before we start to begin. We have to start, you know, showing some kind of justification on why we're waiting and stuff, other than, you know, just financial and everything.
And that's one reason why we have the pool data and look at for option D, which is a thirty by thirty-five foot pool opposed to a thirty-two by seventy-five foot pool. So, I mean, we, we can, I know we can come up with the two hundred and sixteen thousand. We've had that in reserve since, you know, since we discussed this project. We put that away and aside, we set that aside. But, you know, going into a shortfall as well, we're just gonna have, I mean, we'll have to struggle through it if we do this.
Well, and we got to make the decision because we also work for a campground project. And so, I mean, we have to start spending funds on that as well. That's another eight hundred thousand, plus two hundred thousand matching, that'll be back-to-back grants that we're gonna do for. You know, and then looking at the specs, it's, it's, trust me, I, I want, you know, I wish I was being able to give you all the news we wanted to hear regarding the pool, because I want some places where our kids to have activities. More importantly, I want our places for diabetics or people with physical therapy to have a therapy pool. I want that. Problem is, is we keep riddling away, and it's not, it's not the pool that, that we, that we set out the bill. I mean, it's, it's just not. I mean, now we're talking thirty by thirty square pool, and I just don't know if we're gonna get the money's worth. So that is just my analysis of the situation. I brought this up in Budget Committee with Treasurer Thompson, so.
Do you already thought that it'd be a revenue generating thing, open to the public, and charge them, or anything like that? Do you do it because it's a therapy?
No, no, I mean, you could probably generate a little bit of revenue, but we have a fitness center that generates a little revenue, too, but it's not, it's not, it's not the sustainability staff and stuff.
You wouldn't have a thirty by thirty pool, you gotta get a lot of bodies in there. You're not gonna be able to get a big lift.
You know, one of, one of the things that we had talked about was the possibility of flipping the projects, of holding off on the swimming pool until the possibility of more monies, or, or whatever, and starting the campground project, which is, is way more affordable right now. You know, the tribe putting in two hundred thousand, and also having the eight hundred thousand from the federal government. And, you know, with a million dollars, we could do what, what we have proposed to do at the campground, which is the harbor, the bathrooms, concession, and a walking trail, and, and new, what do you call it? Electric, the electrical hookups and stuff, water RVs, and lighting, and all, all of that. And so, you know, those are the things that we have been talking about these last few months.
Can we just, pardon me, can we just stay on point with the pool? Because that campground's a whole different animal.
What, what I'm saying is, is, you know, flipping, starting the...
Yeah, but a million dollars on a campground, you know I'm gonna have to have something to say about that.
Yeah. But, I don't know.
Fisher? So, there's this pool thing going on, and there's a possibility we'll have grants, and we'll use reserve money, and we can actually build a pool. But we have no idea how it's going to be maintained, how, how much it's gonna cost, or any of that stuff?
Well, we do, we do have, we do have some idea. It's just that I wanted to keep the focus on just the construction phase of it, because that's what really is the issue, is that issue here. I mean, we do know what the insurance cost is for staffing, but we do know that the insurance quadruples, for example, from two thousand a year, if you're gonna have just a therapy pool, to it's gonna quadruple or double, depending on if you have children in the pool, you're gonna have to have full-time lifeguards, and all that kind of stuff. So we do know the cost of the saltwater, the chlorine. We do know the, the, what it's gonna cost per year to essentially maintain it.
So is, the thoughts, when you look at it, that it's possible to maintain it? I mean, I think you spent one point four million dollars and have it be fantastic, and then have to shut down six months because you can't keep it open?
My concern is, my concern is never necessarily the maintenance of the pool, it's just building it right off the ground. Just because ICBG projects have, have time constraints on them. So we also have this campground project that we're gonna have to start spending funds on as well, or return, or whatever. So those are all the things that we take into account. The only thing we don't have as far as the sustainability side of things is which department is actually gonna take responsibility for staffing it. We do know the property is probably gonna be responsible for maintenance of the pool. But, you know, talking with DHCS, which seems like a logical conclusion for, for having that type of responsibility to staff it, you know, they already have, TIF already has, you know, fourteen, fifteen departments. So we have to be really careful about adding another component to that. But, you know, we could find that. I think those are the, those questions, I think, are easily, are easy answers. But the hard answer is just the construction phase of it. I mean, that's just the hard, that's the sticking point for me.
Thank you for hearing me. From the community side, of course, I'm only one member, but I do talk to people. And I could see the dilemma that you're in. And I'm not so much concerned, Mr. Natchee, about the maintenance of it, because I think we've got some plans for that. It's, it's money coming up for either, these two projects are on the table right now. And I don't know what you're gonna decide, but from my viewpoint, the pool should be a priority. If you have to turn the, rather than put money in the campground, if you have to turn a project back, in my view, turn the camp, campground back. Because you can, you can look at doing those individually down the road if you have to build a new shower base or whatever, I think. But the pool is gonna be something that's gonna be sustainable. It's gonna be used by the community. It's going to be enjoyed. You could have the elders there in the morning, like they do at the Potter Water Meas. They don't have a huge pool up there, but they have water aerobics and that sort of thing for elders in the morning. And then you could have the kids in the afternoon or whatever. A pool is going to be used, it's gonna be inside pool, so it's gonna be used year-round. And that's something that where kids can get together, they can congregate, they can visit, elders can get together. It's the project we need. It's the project that's going to be there for a while. We need that. We need that pool. We have no social life for our kids. No place for them to go, y'all know that. And I know you all want it, and I know that you're struggling with the money piece of it. But let's do the pool. Let's do fundraisers if we have to do it.
You know, our fundraisers? I'm sorry, Miss, but my opinion, okay, my own sole opinion, of what I was elected to do was look out for the people.
Yes.
We were just talking about wondering if we could send two people to NCAI.
Exactly.
And now we're saying, well, let's spend two hundred thousand on the pool. I mean, where, where does it stop?
She said you all have reserve.
Well, we should have enough reserve to send people to NCAI.
You all should be having your reserve build up for these type of projects. That's what long-range planning is all about.
And I understand that. I have a problem.
If you have to cut council training to put a pool out there, then do it. Because that council training, that council trade is going to go to the council. The pool is gonna go to the people.
I understand that, but there's not two hundred thousand dollars worth of training going on here, and there won't be for ten years. I'm saying that I don't have a problem with that pool. I wanted that pool. It all, everything started changing. Everything started changing. It started out to be a, a nice pool, a therapeutic pool. I just wasn't even notified what we're trying to do, okay? I mean, and then we go to sustainability. You still, even though it's saltwater, it's saltwater based, by the way. Even though it's saltwater based, which is really good for buoyancy and what have you, there's still maintenance to be done. There's still filtration systems to be done, all those things. And we have, and here's a prime example, and this just goes all over me. We got a Jacuzzi sitting over there at the Wellness Center that has boxes in it because it wasn't maintained. I do not want to see that happen. I, I want us, I want us to be able to take care of what we have, to have some pride in it, you see? And we, now we're down to brass tacks. Now, okay, so we can get the one... Now, okay, so we can get the 1.4, right? It doesn't even have like the lifeguard chair, it has no seating, it has just a hole in the ground. And they were talking about having it 10 foot deep. You don't need a 10 foot deep pool. No. That's what's driving up the money. So it's been a very, very frustrating thing.
I understand.
I get the pool, I would love to have our, our kids have, I've got a grandson here in town that can't swim.
I understand, but you all are the elected officials. That's why we put you all on the team.
That's right.
If you have money, you need to come up with, you all the leaders, you all come up with it.
But you better make some sense too.
And that makes perfect sense. You've got money and your reserve that you've been building up to, for these type of projects. For 200,000-
It was like 800,000. I mean, the last focus-
800,000 is the amount of the grant that you get.
No, that's, no, it wasn't. It was 2.2 million with 800,000 coming from us.
No, 800,000 was the grant.
Yeah, but the cost of the pool went to 2.2.
Right, and, but that was, that was the quote and they brought it back down to 1.4.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, we, we were there when it was 2.2 and gonna cost us over and above 200,000 dollars, up into the 800,000s.
Right, but, and when this firm brought this, this, this to us-
But you're doing what you're supposed to do.
Yeah. When the firm brought this to us, it was only gonna be about a million dollar project.
Right.
And then they started changing it up and adding things or whatever. And what, what they quoted to us when we first approved this was around a million dollars. And we knew we were gonna have to come up with more than the 216,000 that was leveraged resources.
We were good.
But then it jumped up, I think, to the 2 million and then we said, oh wait, that, that was not what we signed on for when this was first presented to us. And so we asked the program to go back to the firm and to provide some more options. And then it got down to the 1.4 and then with the last round, it got down to the 842,000 mark. So, I mean, it's been negotiations, you know, but it started out that, out that way and it went up, we had told them to go back down. So this is kinda where we are. You know, we've been dealing with this for, since we got the, the award. So that, this is the semantics of it right now and I guess that's what we just need to vote on if, if we want the 1.4 or the 842,000. And if we do the option C, and we'll have to come up with, what is it, about 4 by 6, 616,000 dollars to do the 1.4 million dollar relap land pools.
And this is just the cost estimate?
Yes.
Does it only, the AEs cost us, those hard numbers from the construction manager? Does it, we don't have a construction manager? So that could, that could win.
So how many different people do we go to about building a pool?
There's like, there were three firms that did, that were interviewed and one firm was selected.
They were engineering firms, they weren't pool builders.
Yeah, so they went like, yes, the pool or not?
Right, no, no, that's a pool.
But the problem is, HUD requires an A E.
Is it a federal?
HUD requires an A E. I'm not, that's the issue. I mean, just by law, that they require an A E firm on a project. Especially if you're building a building for occupancy, which is what the enclosed space is going to be.
So, just my opinion. It'd be great to have a pool, there's no doubt about that. Is it being whittled down to a big jacuzzi, you know, or is it really a functional pool? If we're gonna have to come up with 600,000 to complete it? And, you know, I've heard several times already in the beginning of meetings about budget shortfalls, tightened budgets and things like that. So, I've always pictured things as, as a pie, pie chart. And you have money that fills that pie chart. It's just the pieces of pie that change where that money goes. So we're gonna put 600,000 into a pool, that's gonna take a chunk out of somebody else's pie piece, so that's just gonna be a tough decision down the line. Do you wanna spend 600,000 and then be telling everybody else, sorry, we're gonna have to cut or we can't do it?
Well, that, you know, we, and, and that's basically what it does come down to, Dr. Nakchie, is we will have to, we will have to cut budgets. We will have to deal with that. We're gonna probably have to deal with it anyway. Or, I mean, what we're looking at is we use our reserve for this project, which we have about 2.4 million in the bank with revenue coming in as reserve. We, you know, we'll, I mean, it's, it's messing with, it's dealing with and moving numbers around. We'll have to take budget cuts on the tribal side, but, I mean, if that's what we want to do for the people, we're gonna have to live with it. I mean, we're gonna have to make those sacrifices for, for the people on, and let other things go, reduce our travel across the board, you know? And I know what to do that. I am. I don't know.
Marshall.
Can you really say you could be reduced to 30 by 30? Picture roughly from that door to the wall square.
What's the off-concern of that, of the 30 by 30?
It's around 40.
40?
I have a, I did have a chance to visit the system, the Potter Water Communications Pool and everything, and their function is basically just for exercise. So they have a 30 by 30 foot pool, is exactly what is being proposed. It's a little, ours is a little bit bigger, ours is 30 by 35. Their depth is only 4 feet and it's just a pool. No one under 21 is allowed in their facilities. So their exercise facilities is only for adults. They don't allow any children or anything. So they don't have, they don't have the necessary insurance, so I feel like they're pretty special. But, and it was all one foot deep. And this would be great if we had a full functioning fitness center, this would be ideal for us, but, you know, from what I'm hearing and everything, it's pretty huge for exercise. I actually watched somebody in this pool and everything try to do laps. You know, if you're a tall person, you're, you're over there in like white shorts and they were turning around and everything. So it was a nice facility. I enjoyed, I enjoyed talking to the director, they had a sky track and everything, I just don't think that's for us, this size anyway, especially for the kind of men.
Yeah, I think we're getting to the therapeutic pool size.
Yeah.
Does this, um, does this new cost estimate look at your debt?
Yeah, it reduces the debt also. And I did talk to the AE about the cost and everything and he told me that even though the debt does add cost, it wasn't, that wasn't the part driving the cost, it's the upfront cost of the equipment to the pool because we want quality, commercial grade equipment, especially for our property issue. So if we skipped out on the quality on the equipment, then we're just gonna have to pay that back later by replacing it. So that's something else to think about.
So that's item number one on our list. Yes.
Explain to me what happens to the grant money if you don't give those back. So what does that do to our, what, credit or score? Does that, does that embarrass us?
No.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt us.
It doesn't hurt us? Oh, okay. So it'd be better?
Well, we could give it back, but it doesn't affect us. I mean, obviously-
In the future?
No, it doesn't affect us in the future.
The other thing with that is too, is that we may do away with the ICBVG projects, the funding may disappear and we would never have the opportunity, the potential opportunity to build a pool and get 800,000 dollars from the federal government.
However, there are, the USDA, there are tribes that build pools and use USDA grants. The match requirements are a little bit different, sometimes they're 50/50, sometimes they're 60/40, but they have, they have USDA response cash, so there's, there's other ways of going about it. We've looked at other options as well.
You know, the, the reality that, that all tribal nations face right now is, is the possibility of many of the funding sources for many of the things that tribes get as far as ICBG and programs and even USDA, I believe, is, is being cut. And they've always had a lot of money, but, but even their monies are being cut. So, and, and that's, that's the dilemma that, that this council has been faced with is, is what we want and what we're willing to afford. And, and all of these things and it, that's just, it's been a tough one and this council has debated it, we've talked about it, we wish for it, we hope for it, we've listened to, you know, tribe and, and I'll just, I'll be the one to say that everybody, the tribe wants the pool, but, but they want a swimming pool. They want a swimming pool that, that is for the kids, that can be used recreationally. And that's what we wanted at the very beginning and then, and then we, we were hit with the cost and it just blew us away, the 2.2 million to get what we actually wanted at that time. And then it went to, what, 1.8? 1.8 million. And, and really, if we're looking at a, and this, this is what I'm looking at, if we're, if we're looking at a swimming pool type for Oni Nation that can be used as a, as a swimming pool, be functional that way, we would probably need to look at that 1.8.
1.4?
Or 1.4.
The 32 by 75?
32 by 75.
1.4?
1.4, that's a hard one.
Okay. Okay, all right. I missed that meeting. 1, 1.4, which is better than 1.8. And, and that will get us that 32 by 72?
75.
75 pool, which is a swimming pool, which is different depths. And that is something that would be usable for all of our people, from the young ones to the older ones. And, and we could do all the things that, that we are talking about, having the, you know, the elders in the morning, the swimming aerobics and all of that and then having kids there, all of that. There's also the cost of, of lifeguards and insurance and all of that. And so, that's where we're at, 1.4 million. It'll be a, a initial cost for the, for the nation of 600,000 dollars. 600,000 dollars will get us the pool, right? That we, that we would like to have, the 32 by 75. Yes?
What's that translate to meters? Would that be a 50 meter pool wide? Can't.
50 meters is just 150 feet.
I was just saying that because-
It's half, it's a half a little bit long.
Ours was a professional swimmer for years, you know, when I lived in Puerto Rico and we had, you know, we had, I was on three different teams and there was a lot of participation in, in sports, but you have to have a 50 meter pool. This is a sports community, they get behind sports all the time. And I just, you know, feel like if, if we're going to do this for our young people, that's what, we need a 50 meter pool. I guess that, that could definitely be part of a, a good team project.
What, what kind of times are we looking at now for you?
Well, like I said, you know, a decision really, we, obviously we want one now, but we can wait and I can extend my implementation schedule until the first 2018, but we really have to show progress that we're doing something. And, you know, and not only that, you know, we're keeping our AE on board and in his contract, you know, I don't know how much he's gonna make it stick to this contract, but he had an 18 month contract. So, you know, we can finish this, you know, we have a design and then build, so at 60% that's when we start going after our CM and everything. Right now, this is just, I don't think it's even a good team. It's just basically his, our thoughts on paper, what they got from those designs and stuff.
Also, this piece of paper, the summarization of the facts, doesn't include the 65,000 dollars for electrical service upgrades. So there'll be an additional 65 grand.
And, yeah, and that, that was included on the estimates, that was come from the estimates and it doesn't include the renovation money that we would need for the fitness center to make that child inhabitable so we can move our after-school project or after-school program over there with all the other children. And I think that one was between 35 and 65,000, I think the last time I said that.
And what would that mean, when would we have to have that money?
That would probably, one of the first things we would wanna do because we wouldn't wanna start construction until after those children.
And what about the 65K? When is that interested in?
Well, that's, that's that, that's the renovation.
Oh, the 65K is the renovation? Okay. I thought you meant that was the other, it was on top of the 65, for the electrical upgrade.
I think what Councilman Adson had mentioned, I did put down here, like, the 65,000 doesn't include electrical upgrades. That could possibly be needed because it is a renovation.
So as it adds up, it may be 700,000 we have to come up with?
Yeah. They were trying to, while we were laying our budget, you know, not our budget, but you know, kinda telling them, you know, we only have so much money, we can't afford this 2.7 million dollar pool. So that's when they start taking out costs and everything. And that was obviously one of those things that was astridden by that number.
President.
Yes, sir.
So how long's this been, been being discussed?
Since, I came back in January, I think, and so I've been asking-
16 or 17?
No, this is 17.
17.
Since, I think since February, early February.
So since February, there's really not been a decision made to proceed or not?
Yeah, because when I came back from maternity leave, while I was on maternity leave, that's when that 2.7 million dollar figure came out. So whenever I came back, I, I asked the A E to give us a better number.
So President, what do you need to know?
Well, what we, what we could do is, is take a motion on the pool, but, but also wanna, wanna say this, that, that I'm also hearing from our new council, you know, your questions and you have a lot of questions and I'm wondering if, if it would be beneficial to meet with Reba and to meet with Andrew and, and get these numbers and then make a decision the next time we meet. Because I know you all are coming into it and, and you're gonna have to make a decision, yes or no, based on what we've discussed here. And this, this is big. And then you're hearing the people and, and the people want this and we want this. And Angela has identified money that we can do it and proceed, we're looking at 700,000 basically to build the 32 by 75 pool that will be a swimming pool, which would be beneficial for all. would be beneficial for all. So that's what we're looking at.
I'm fine with making decisions on facts. I don't feel I have all the facts. The stuff that's been presented to me right now, I just couldn't support spending all that money. But if you guys can come up with better facts and figures, different story. It's like somebody coming up and wanting an MOU. Write me an MOU. What, what do we do? What's involved with it? Vote for a pool. What am I voting for? How much am I, what's the total cost going to be involved? Yeah, great to have a pool, but...
It's very valid. That's very valid. Because I've been asking a lot of questions. To begin with, this pool was 10-foot deep. Then I want to throw kids in there. I mean, why would you put kids in a 10-foot-deep pool? I mean, that's silly. So we've just been going back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. And to this day, I'm still very unhappy with even the thought of spending that kind of money on a 30 by 35-foot pool. I mean, if it was the same price with a bigger pool, 75-foot, I'd jump at that. But we're not there. And I can't consciously say I would vote for that right now.
So, President, you think we can get that information in two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, let's get it by the time we have our next council meeting.
We have, I mean, the information's in the packet. That's all the information.
The 65,000 is in the packet?
Yeah.
No, I got the original estimates. If you want to look at them, I mean, or, yeah, the original cost estimates from the A&amp;E, you can look at this.
But that's just the original? That's not...
Dr. Knight Chief's talking about the 65,000 that was not included, and then the additional, there was additional money not included.
Thirty-five.
The 65 is on the, and it's stated there, does not include 65,000.
Right. So we want, I want to see it all in totality. I mean, what are we looking at? I don't want asterisks, I want to know exactly what we're looking for.
Read that information by next visit, will you?
Yeah.
Just like... I'm not always big on tabling things for next meeting, next meeting, next meeting, you know? Come on, let's get the facts and make a decision. I don't think I have the facts.
Can you get that right down to you then?
I can get it to you in the morning.
Sure. Like, any stuff, I consider that stuff like hidden costs. I want to know what the hidden cost is. How much is it going to cost to put a key in the door and open it up and have people go in?
Well, like I said, all the leads that we have now are just cost estimates from the architectural firms' point of view, and what they are talking to their people with. We got cost estimates from two different firms. I asked them to come up here and give me some numbers, some rough numbers on what it would cost to renovate, you know? And, you know, I just got emails and, you know...
Sure, whatever you get to them, it'll be helpful.
I make a motion to table this item on, one, under Own Business, until the next council meeting, so that you can get the information to the rest of the council, the new members. I think we have that information. You've already sent all that to us. So get that to them, so they can review it, so they can have all the information to make an informed decision. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Okay, motion to the table passes. And I would say to you all that are here, and also to those who may be listening on YouTube, to contact us.
Way in.
Way in on this. We need your voices to speak to us, because this is your monies, and we will be making a decision based on your monies. Yes, sir.
I'd like to, I hope that you all consider, I know money's a big issue, but I've got small children, and, you know, hopefully taking into consideration the children that live here, that my kids, they have nothing to do. We have to go out of town 30 miles for them to find something to do, to go swim, or even to just go to a splash pad. That affects the children's, you know, my children don't even want to live here because they're frustrated, because they don't have a pool here. They also have therapy department applied. I used to teach water aerobics in Midwest City. And I was looking forward to this, because I wanted to start teaching water aerobics again. It's good for arthritis, it's good for therapy, for knees, for overall, for overall heart. That's not necessary, too, for the, for our elders, where they can spend time together, and that's part of their livelihood. When I taught water aerobics in Midwest City, my youngest person in there was like 70 years old. The oldest person in there was like 90, in her 90s. And I taught Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they didn't miss. It became a fellowship time with them, you know, and it's real important to them, because it became their livelihood, not only physically, but emotionally, just fellowship with each other. And that's really important for a lot of our elders here. And it helps. It helps you therapeutically, it helps you, your mind, gets your heart pumping, and that's important for, we always say, we want things for our elders and for our children. This is something that's, and I know that you may have to cut, you know, cut trips or whatever, but I would encourage you all to dig deep, turn over rocks, look for money to where this, we could have this. Because us that, I live here, and my children need it. It could be therapy. My kids could be out swimming, and it's helping them deal with losing their father. That's therapy, that's things like that, that keep children from going and running around town, or running the streets, or going out and getting into the drugs or alcohol. We need this, you know? It's really important. So turn over those rocks, dig deep, dig deep, and sit back on some trips and think of, and I know you all have, and I know you will, but think really hard, because it's really important for us, that, for our elders, and for our children, which really that's what it's about. That's all.
All right, I'm ready. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number 12, New Business, and item number one, Approval of Resolution 1732, Signature Authority and Election Results.
Do we have the revised resolution? With the revised language?
The draft, one that I suggested you basically make changes to whatever you...
Okay, well, I thought the AG was going to make changes.
Make changes.
So we don't need, we don't need the actual resolution that says it?
If you guys change it, do that.
Oh.
The resolutions that help you all...
Well, usually you make the changes on the resolution, you get it to, this is my hard copy. Okay. I make a motion to approve seventeen, a resolution 1732, with the amended language regarding seat, regarding seat three, that the AG provided. Did everybody get that? I don't have it in front of me.
I provided it to Cindy.
What the discussion was on the fifth, whereas, it talks about providing the oath, and we all know that Mr. Horse Chief is no longer with us, so he didn't take the oath, so we want to make the language reflect that, so it's correct.
It was a skirters error, and it was easily corrected?
Yes.
So, so the fifth whereas will say, on the 20th day of May 2017, Judge Diana Barker Harold administered the oath of office to three members who have assumed the duties of their positions, with member seat number three being listed.
Okay, great. I make that motion with that edit.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1732 is approved. Move to item number two, Approval of Resolution 1733, Declaration of Vacancy and Call for Special Election.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1733.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Resolution 1733 is approved. Move to item number three, Approval of Resolution 1734, Indian Preference Form, BIA-44 approved to.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1734.
Second.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Number four, Approval of Resolution 1735, Appointment of Supreme Court Justice.
I have a concern about this, because it was over a year ago, when it was advertised, and it has been delayed for so long, and I really feel that having, making our new members make a decision on this is not fair. And so, I don't know, I think maybe, maybe we have to look at the advertising, because it's been so long, it was over a year ago.
I agree with that.
Okay, with that, we can make a motion to table.
We can table, or... Yeah, because we've readvertised. Okay. Or do you make that a part of your motion to table and readvertise?
Yeah, table and readvertise.
Do we want to keep it on the table? Or are we going to put it on the table? Yeah, and that's what I'm asking, because that's what we want to do.
That's what we've been doing. We've been a table...
Can we just readvertise or give it a resolution?
Yeah, that would take that, use it. Sounds fresh. That's what I'm thinking.
So, no motion? Yes. So is that your motion?
Is that your motion?
Readvertise?
Yeah. Readvertise, that would be my motion. I'll second that.
Okay, call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
All right, this is Rockspur Nation. Item number four, Resolution 1735, The Appointment of Supreme Court Justice. Because of the length of time that has taken place, we are going to readvertise. So that's for clarification. Item number five, Discussion and/or Action on Pawnee Nation Princess Contest.
President Pratt, this is my agenda item. Do we have a quarterly meeting scheduled for June the 3rd?
Yes, we do.
We do. Well, we're, okay, so we're already too late. This is the dilemma, folks. I was, I was challenged, I should say, to have a Pawnee Nation Princess Committee, so that the tribe, we as Pawnee people, have a nation princess. Well, we advertised it, and advertised it, and I had no applicants. Nobody applied. So, we kind of reenounced it at the Roundhouse, at the rededication of the Roundhouse, and I have three applicants. Now I have three. I'm glad we didn't go forward, because I was supposed to have a luncheon, and the boys were going to bring their drum, and it was going to be kind of a to-do. And I just asked President Pratt, can we just stop it? So we stopped it. We have our cram. I know that Bruce Caesar did a beautiful job on that, so I'm told. We've got the girls working it around the office.
I was going to tell you that.
So, I want to get, I'm going to order her banner, and these are kind of like sole-source things, and I'm sorry, I really don't know the process. I've never submitted anything for a check. So, there's a gal down in Opala City that's going to make her shawl and her banner for us. And then it's just a matter of scheduling the time to do this. I have Judy Nettle, that's on the committee. Leanna Chapman's on it.
Not Judy Nettle.
Huh?
Not Judy Nettle, Judy's sister.
I'm sorry, Judy Hamilton, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Judy Hamilton. You knew, I was looking at you, Ann. Judy, Judy Hamilton, Carla Knight Chief, and Beverly Harjo.
And Leanna.
And Leanna, Leanna Teeter, and myself. Is there anybody else that would like to participate? Women, men, anybody? See, that is how it's been. So anyways, I just need to schedule another date for that, and now we're getting into the thick of powwow season, so I'll go forward. I wanted to report to everybody and let everybody, including our community, know what's really going on. Okay? Does anybody have any feedback, or questions, or comments, or ideas?
Do these girls have to be enrolled members, or can they just be descendants of Pawnees?
See, that was one of the things, that we have a lot of people that are descendants of Pawnees that may be on Oto role, or somebody else's role. But the council really wants a Pawnee tribal member, enrolled Pawnee.
In the past, a Pawnee Nation princess was enrolled.
Yes.
Their princess could always be someone's...
Anybody. Yeah, so this is a Pawnee enrolled member. That's how we want to go with it. So we have three applicants.
All right.
And I'm going to readvertise, since I have a few weeks out, and just, you know, reach out. I reached out to the school and everybody else, so I'll just keep doing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. All right.
And let's move on.
Well, no, you're all going to be there.
All right. So, let's move on to item number six, Approval of Resolution 1736, New Applicants.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carrie. This is the resolution for the enrollment department. These are the new applicants. There are six. Enrollment committee met on May 4th, and the Masharo council met on May 13th, and these applicants were approved by their resolution of 1702.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1736.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 1736 is approved. Move to item number seven, Approval of Resolution 1737, Deceased.
And the same with the committee that made forth to, you know, review documents that documented the deceased members and their dates. So this resolution will note their date of death in the files, and then remove them from the annuity book.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1737.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
Okay, we move to item number eight, Approval of Resolution 1738, Conditional Relinquishment.
This tribal member has submitted an authorized conditional relinquishment to become a, they want to become enrolled with the Chickasaw Nation.
I make a motion to approve resolution 1738.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes.
All right, resolution 1738 is approved, passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, for speaking out with us. Thank you, Karen, for speaking out with us.
We thought she was going to go in for that Pawnee Princess Contest. Let's move on to item number nine. Budget committee recommendations.
Okay, we were presented with approval of the CHR budget modification number one. They received a $900 increase for a total budget amount of $195,812. Budget committee recommends approval, and I make that motion.
All right, motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
All right, that CHR budget modification number one is passed. We move to item number ten. Approval and selection of safe routes to school CM.
Perfect timing.
Great timing.
The ballgame just ended.
Win or lose?
Pawnee won.
Both of them?
Both. This is some construction management to assist us on the safe routes to school. So they're just going to verify the quantities and quality as we do this project, which we're fixing to start. Probably in the next three weeks, states that have signed up, we're ready to go. This is basically our last step. We did the procurement, policy procedures. What is this?
Yeah, what is this?
Safe routes to school. So back in 2011, we were awarded, we applied for a grant. This is going to be sidewalks along Sixth Street, along the elementary school and across walks. And there's a wall that's promptly erected by the elementary school. It's going to be replaced as well, so.
And this is where the construction manager, right?
Yes, and this is a small portion again, you know, from the day-to-day operations going to be us. This is just helping us, because there's a lot of concrete and a lot of rebar and stuff. We're just, this is the extra steps that we're taking to assure that everything's going to be correct.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Cross Timberage Consulting as the safe routes to school CM.
Without.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. More discussion. Call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Atson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight Chief?
Yes.
All right, Council, that is approved. Thank you, Chris. All right, we're going to move on to item number eleven, which is the discussion on the voting. The voting that we had talked about, the end call, calling in, voting for the Pawnee Business Council.
Following the meeting on April twenty-fourth, there were several members of the nation who approached my office about members of the Business Council calling in to a business council meeting and then also casting a vote in those meetings. So what I did was, I went back to the Constitution. And as I was looking at the Constitution, I looked at, where I focused in, Article four, Section five. All acts of the Pawnee Business Council shall be determined by a majority vote in the membership present, provided five members of the council shall constitute a form to transact it. That was one section. Another section, too, which I failed to put in my opinion, is Article seven of the Constitution, Section one, forfeiture. If a member of the Pawnee Business Council fails or refuses to attend two regular or special meetings per year from the date of oath of office, unless excused by the Pawnee Business Council President for illness or other causes for which the member cannot be held responsible, his or her office shall be declared forfeited by Resolution of Pawnee Business Council, a vacancy shall be filled. So upon those readings, I had a reconsideration of that. And my feeling is that I think that a council member should be present in order to vote. Now, a council member can call into a meeting, they can participate in discussions, but I think that it would be unconstitutional for them to vote. And as far as the meeting that was, did occur on the twenty-fourth, my view is that I think that from this point forward, that should be the rule that we follow. And I just feel that that's the route we should go on that. It's the Constitution. I think if we start picking and choosing which sections of the Constitution to apply or to ignore, I think that the council's on dangerous ground. And then, of course, you always have to be called in some of your oath of office when you start getting on to dangerous ground. So that's what led me to that opinion.
So you're saying that a call-in could count as being present in a meeting, but you just can't do any voting?
That would not be an official presence, being unofficial. I don't think there's any problem with a council member calling in and participating in discussions or listening. I just think that the problem arises when you vote via teleconference.
Okay.
Or telephonically.
So, so, pardon me.
That's okay.
So we can attend via teleconference?
Yes.
We just cannot vote?
You got it.
But we're still present, right?
You're still present. Well, no, you don't be present. You wouldn't be officially present.
Well, we need to look at this. This is like, you know, the year 2017. There's video conferencing, there's telecoms all over the place. And I really kind of take exception to the thought that we wouldn't be able to at least attend to be in attendance. You know, I mean, even if we, okay, so we can vote, but at least be in attendance.
Well, it's the way that the Constitution is written. We can go back and we can rewrite the Constitution at a future date. We talked about that, we now have a new council to do that. But as it stands right now, I think that's how it looks. And also to your credit, Counselor Sammy, at different times, you've been unable to attend. Those were excused and it all worked out.
I understand.
Counselor Donna is very busy, the same with her, too.
Well, Dr. Knight Chief will be, too. So I was just saying.
Yeah, so I think this is something you can participate, but you just can't vote. And then also, there comes problems with executive session. That is, participation in executive session via telephonic or teleconference, I don't think that that's wise. I also think that's unconstitutional because it's just too problematic.
Yes.
So as it stands now, if we call in, it's informational on our part?
You got it.
Basically just listening in on that.
Listening in, and you can participate.
To change that so that we can use 21st century technology with all this stuff? Is it a change in the Constitution? Is it amendment to the Constitution?
Yes.
So we'd have to make an amendment?
Counselor Sammy's correct. Counselor Sammy's correct. We'll have to do an amendment.
Have to rewrite it.
Yeah.
And that's a vote by the people?
Yeah. But we're talking about doing a major constitutional reform with this council. So that would be something that definitely needs to be on the radar. And in light of the other changes that have been talked about, I think that's a minor change.
So my problems are, to be honest, that's my problem. So my problem is that the way it stands, if we allow that to happen constitutionally, that can affect whatever took place at that meeting at that time. Until we change the Constitution?
My view is the complaints came after that meeting. And I don't want to go back and, and I don't want to undo the results of those meetings. I think they'll be too problematic legally. So my suggestion is from this point forward, we need to be very careful to adhere to what the Constitution says.
So we could allow the meeting to stand as it did with all participants in the voting and things like that?
Yes, sure.
And that's based on a lack of information, we'll have to say?
Yes.
But since everybody knows now that it's not constitutionally?
Yeah, from this point forward.
We shouldn't be doing that any further because we're going to be violating.
Correct.
So as we go forward, we need to, one of the amendments we'll have to make is allowing
Correct.
21st century technology.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I disagree. The Constitution is the Constitution. If we're going to interpret the Constitution as it says to be present, we cannot, and if we agree to that, we cannot go back and say, oh, well, just because we got a complaint, we're going to follow the Constitution now. It's either legal or it's not legal.
You have my opinion.
I know, and I disagree with his opinion.
You're interrupting me now.
I know, but I disagree with his opinion.
I just agree with you.
That's okay.
And the thing is, it's an advisory opinion, but you have to also keep in mind, Counselor. I read those two sections. Also, you have to keep in mind of, let's see, Section, let's see, Article seven, Section four, Roman numeral four, letter F, littles B and C. Willful neglect or refusal to fulfill statutory duties, intentional conduct reflecting very negligent on the dignity and integrity of the tribal government. I mean, again, if you want to start picking and choosing what sections of the Constitution you want to follow, I think you may be on dangerous ground.
Well, Mr. AG, that's what you're doing. You're saying on one sense that that was not valid, but we don't have, we shouldn't go back and follow it for that meeting that's in question. And this is on me, I'm the one that called in and I participated. And my philosophy is that if I'm on travel and I'm able to call in, I should be able to call in because I was, that's why I don't travel, you know, when there's a meeting. And I've told, I've said this many times on council floors, that I will not miss a meeting. But I thought, well, if I can participate via conference call, I'm still doing my due diligence as a tribal member, I mean, as a tribal council member to conduct business. And that's what elected people elected me to do.
Well, that may be your opinion, Counselor, but you know, you have my opinion. That is Article four, Section five, membership present, and then Article seven of Section one, forfeiture. And then you need to be called in some of your oath of office as well.
And I am. How dare you question my oath of office and how I look at it? I take offense to that, Mr. AG.
Well, I'm sorry you did.
I am not, I have not, anything that I have done has, does not reflect what you're saying right there. And I, I like.
Because you're picking and choosing what you want to follow.
No, it's order.
Order, yeah, here we go. Marshall?
You know, I don't know what happened in the past. But I do know what happened in the past. I was on the committee that helped write this particular Constitution. And we put in there, be present at the meeting to be able to vote. And the reason we did that is so that, you know, somebody called in, there was an executive session. You know, that's a closed thing. And cell phones were just coming in. Not everybody had one when this Constitution was being written. And cell phones weren't really secure. And so that committee put that in there, you had to be present because council did travel. They didn't always have a chance to call in. But we felt that council needed to be present because sometimes there was articles prohibited to you at council meetings, and you needed to have that in front of you. We didn't all have laptops. We didn't all have, you know, data on our phones. We didn't all have phones. But we did that on that Constitution at that time for reasons. And we wanted everybody to be present to vote. And that was the purpose of that. And that was the tenet. We know things have changed now, but still, when that was written, it was purposely put in there for you to be present to vote. We tried to put it in there for that language. If you want to change it, now's the time. Get your committees together and change it. You know, things need to be changed. The Constitution is old now. It needs to be revived. But I'm just telling you, the way it was written, required of it, we felt that you needed to be present to vote. We tried to put those words in there to express what we felt. And it was voted on by the people. It was voted by the people.
Well, I did, on executive session, I did, I did cut off. I did participate in executive session. But I called in to do my due diligence, to attend a meeting and do my, conduct business, even though I was away. I had good intentions. It was not like I was trying to forfeit my duties. If anybody can look at how many times I have sat here at a meeting, I probably missed maybe one, maybe two meetings, but they were excused because I was on travel. But I have never, never for any other reason than travel and conducting tribal business. And even at that time, I had to question whether, whether or not I should travel or be here at this table because my first and foremost responsibility as my oath of office is to be here and conduct business on behalf of this tribe. And I am very upset at that comment.
You have my opinion.
And I don't want a response.
You have my.
I don't want a response from you.
I have an opportunity.
I don't want a response from you.
I have a question. So you have your interpretation, you're the AG, you make legal determinations for our tribe. Mr. Gover here gave us the historical basis of why that was in there in the present. So it's kind of well-established that we should be doing that. So in my mind, the question is, what happens to the last meeting? And I know how we're going to proceed. The proceed is we have to change that stuff that allows us to do that kind of stuff. And that's going to be a vote on tribes to like, so my question is, the last meeting, what happens with that?
Well, the last meeting, to best of my knowledge, nothing was passed out of that meeting. We talked about this one vote at Bell, I think there were two other issues, I think both of those failed.
So no real action was taken on in that meeting?
I made a motion, I voted.
Andrew, you had some things to say?
Well, I have, I have my own opinion, Counselor, and one of the things, and I may disagree with some of you on this, but one of the things is, you all as a council have the ability to set your protocols, right? I mean, because I had, I had an issue with the call-in, too, for the executive session reason, right? I mean, if you're going to be a council member and you're present, in my mind, you had to participate fully in the entire council meeting. But barring all that, my other issue was that the interpretation of present can only be the interpretation of a court. Right? So if we talk about challenges and legal interpretations, a court will interpret that language that says present. And they will use my uncle Marshall's words and other people in their own council to come to their conclusion about what it means to be present. But I think, just like in a lot of things in the Constitution, you have, since you're the supreme governing body, you have broad authorities, authorities to come to consensus as a body and make decisions as a body and vote. I think you all have the ability to come to the decision and say, okay, we define present as X. Because there is nothing. I mean, there's only a historical basis, there's no legal challenge in court. There's no judge telling you that you have to do be this. We have a legal opinion here, we have my executive director opinion there. But in the end, I think that you as a supreme governing body have the opportunity to interpret the Constitution in the spirit of the Constitution, right? My issue was that I think it needed to be voted on. Like the council needed to vote in council through a motion to allow presence to be one thing. Otherwise, it needs to be interpreted in court. There needs to be a legal challenge.
So we don't really need to have a constitutional amendment voted by the tribe? Internally with the council, say that our interpretation of present is X, Y, Z?
As long as it's by resolution.
And I wouldn't have a problem with that either. In fact, the thing is, is I have thought of, other members, other tribal members have approached me about a code of ethics for the council. And I think that would be an ideal place to put that. That is, defining presence within the parameters of the code of ethics for the council.
Yeah, because I... Could be done internally.
I, I think so, because there's other things that the council does. I think in the past, they used like the signature stamp issue. That, that's been an issue, right? It says in the Constitution that all checks must be signed by the treasurer and countersigned by the president. In the past, councils have used that they delegated that signature authority to other people or to a signature stamp. So they, they, they already set the mold for the interpretation of the Constitution. As long as it's done in council by a body with a vote by, by a resolution stating that we're gonna interpret this to mean this.
So how long do we need to wait to do that?
We can start working on a code of ethics right now immediately.
Okay.
I think it's overdue, could be a good place to put it.
Well, I think this is common governance.
I think your interpretation of code of ethics in law and in business are a little bit different. Because my understanding as a business major is a code of ethics is doing the right thing for the majority of the people. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, well, I know, that's not the, legally, that's, you guys are on a whole different parameter by law, you know? The legal part of it. But in a business sense, doing the right thing, you know? And I think that everybody on the, at this table has the right intentions. They, they, everybody has the right intentions.
Well, see, everybody...
I've called in before too. I, I've called in over the pool. I mean, I, I've done those things. We didn't vote at that time, but I still participate like that.
Oh, and I think there's nothing, again, nothing wrong with participating. It's just the problem is with voting, and it can be remedied. And you also now have the benefit of the historical record of why the Constitution was written down there. And it can be remedied. And protocols can be, can be placed into a code of ethics.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just give the council another example, right? One of the, one of the statutory, or one of the constitutional things for removal says willful neglect or refusal to fulfill statutory duties or see intentional conduct reflecting very negatively on the dignity and integrity of tribal government. Now, where in the heck in the Constitution is defined very negatively or dignity or integrity, right? Those are, those are things the Constitution lays out, but they're up to the interpretation of you, you all as the supreme governing body. You all decide what integrity means. You all decide what willful neglect means. Unless, unless it's been challenged in the court and a judge in the Supreme Court has ruled that on this issue neglect means X. Do all of the final arbiters on what the Constitution is interpreted to mean.
And Andrew brings up an excellent point, because the thing is, is as it stands now, it'd be up to a court of law to define that. But of course, you guys as a body could define that within a code of ethics.
Right, and that's where I think, in my opinion, that's where I think that this issue with the last meeting comes into play. We have to ask ourselves as legal people, was it harmless? In this sense, was it harmless that this mistake occurred? Or was it such a breach of legal duties and ethics that a violation occurred that so was egregious that it needs to be adjudicated in court?
Right.
And, and that's up to the, that's up to the council to decide too. I mean, this is the, that's just my opinion. I mean, that's just the way I, I view things. But that's why I think that you can look at this meeting that happened last time and say, okay, in, in the context of things, it was a harmless error. Business was conducted, and you probably should have been because the council didn't make a formal act on it, but we're gonna act on it, we're gonna define it, whatever. Unless, of course, it's challenging court and the judge says, you know what, no. You know, that meeting's canceled and...
Andrew's correct. And the thing, that, that brings up my, my other point I made earlier. That is, that you have to be, I know it's a problematic document, but the problem is, is we have to read it in a holistic manner, and that, we should. And that is, you can't start picking and choosing, you know, what is, what we should follow and what we shouldn't because it can be dangerous ground. And you're right, you know, Sammy, Counselor Sammy and I have talked about this many times. And that is that the way things are viewed in the private sector and the way things are viewed in the government sector, often different.
That's right.
So, but I do, I do empathize with your point of view on that.
So is the, all this discussion is that we will develop a resolution to change the interpretation of presence? That's what we're gonna, that's what we're gonna be working on, right?
I have...
Not having to, but I have to change the Constitution.
Yeah, let's do that.
That's what I mean, define it.
Let's define it, and let's use that as a segue to develop the code of ethics. And let's, let's work on definition first.
So my question is, who's gonna work on that?
Well, I'm the AG. What it is, what it is.
Look at that table. I mean, in my mind, you know, AG, you're, you're, you're the legal decision maker about the legalities of all the things that the tribe does in the business and things like that. So, yeah, I would, I'd like for you to come up with something that we can...
It's easy.
So is there, is there a motion that needs to be made, or...
I, I don't think there's...
Or we just have to let them work on it, and we'll go on with business?
Yeah, I suppose.
Just let them work on it.
Yeah, because it's just an opinion. It's just, the thing is, now you got us flashing yellow light until we fix it, and fix it.
I'm fine with that.
And then, we still have the issue of the minutes.
Oh. Yeah, we still have the issue of the PBC meeting minutes, 42417, which we tabled.
Since, since that was...
But, but since, is, is, are, are we wanting to deal with that now? Or like...
I would go ahead and just go ahead and approve them as is. And the thing is, again, Andrew and I are in agreement, and that is that time is here. So just go ahead and approve the minutes, and then from this point forward, things are gonna be a new, well, there's gonna be a new way to do business.
Because harmless error is a legal definition?
Yes, it is, and that is that it is, in the eyes of the judge, it can be error, but the deal is, if there's no real net harm...
Right.
Then it's harmless.
No malice intended and that stuff.
Yeah, because there's no, there's no malice intended in all, any of this stuff.
Sure. I'm good with that. Okay, so, yes?
And the tribal member here, full-blown with that. Let me ask you, are you saying that you want to change something to, so that you're not, your presence physically don't have to be here sitting here discussing business?
I think what we're, what we're discussing is, is we're gonna discuss that.
Okay.
Because, because what we're hearing and what I understand is, is that you have to be physically present according to...
Well, let me ask you, that you take your time. New members, council members, take your time. This has been run this way for years.
Yeah.
And I'm proud of my past council, you know, that turned up their business that way.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that, thank you. So, moving on, looking at item 11, we have discussed this, this voting and, and what took place on 42417. So what we could do now, according to what has been said, is if we want to go ahead and move back to item number four and approve the minutes for 42417 as is, we can do that.
President Pratt, I would like to make a motion to approve our PBC meeting minutes of 42417 without malice and take them as they are, and then move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Donna seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Oh, I have to, oh, because I wasn't here, right? Okay, that's right, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Charles Knight, ABS, stay too, right?
Charles Knight, stay.
Let him say, uh, Charles, stay.
All right, motion, the PBC minutes of 42417 are passed. Let's move to item number 12, the Pawnee Nation College. Discussion and our action on payment to Pawnee Nation College tribal funds. So it's just, just an informational thing on my part. Is this something that you, you do on an annual basis at this time? Or is this... No. This is something going on, or what? Yeah, this is an ongoing discussion that we have as a business council have been having with, with the problems that this council has perceived with the Pawnee Nation College, specifically the president of the Pawnee Nation College. And we have been in discussion with the board, with the president, with, with others, DOE and different things. And we have wrestled with this, trying to, trying to find a way for this council to move forward in what we perceive as a problematic issue, specifically with the president. And so this is, this has been on the, on our agenda for months now. And, and we have, we have, we have looked at this, and, and we're still here. So we're, we're still here. President? Yes. So this is, this is a discussion on if the tribe wants to continue to provide funds to the Pawnee Nation College? Or is this a discussion to approve monies that have already been used? Is it future, we're talking about future stuff? Or obligations we already have? I mean, are we trying to decide if we're gonna continue to fund the Pawnee Nation College? Or not, I fund it, but contribute the tribal part of it? The tribal share? Yeah, the tribal share. Uh, yes, to certain parts of it. Okay. That, that's been the discussion. Well, I think you heard me say it earlier. I'm not real big on putting things off, putting things off, putting things off. I mean, get the facts and make a decision, so... Maybe this is another one, because, and, and, and we're, Donna's looking at, but we're not in consensus on this. We are not in consensus on this, and... And, and, and maybe we're still, we're still there, you know? Because maybe we need to table this one too and allow the new folks to weigh in on as far as what we're dealing with because it's not fair to you. Yeah, if I'm gonna vote on something, again, I'd like to know. But I hate table things, but I like to know what I'm talking about anyway. Okay. All right. So we can...
President?
Yes?
Please note, then, you're all invited to the meeting, and you'll get, you can ask questions here at VOT, who am I supervising?
All righty. So item number 12?
Oh, I got that.
Tabled? We can take a motion to table.
I motion to table.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Let me ask a question, will that exclude him and I? Because, no.
No, no, yes.
Okay, we'll just table. Okay, all right, thank you.
If it was about an old meeting, it would be okay.
Right, all right. Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Tricia McCray?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Sammy Adson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Charles Knight?
Yes. All right, item number 12, Pawnee Nation College. Discussion and our action to payment on payment to Pawnee Nation College tribal funds is tabled. We move to item number 13, which is the tribal issue.
President?
Yes?
So again, quick synopsis of what this is all about. Four words or less?
Wow, this is another thing.
In a previous council meeting, my travel to Denver was brought up and, from Angela, treasurer Angela, and me going to the travel. In question is, is the question of a refundable or non-refundable ticket. And the ticket in question, Angela had asked me if the ticket was refundable, and I told her I didn't know. And so I went and asked. Refundable, and if you weren't able to go, could you get your money back? Yes. Okay. And so I went and asked, and then was told it was non-refundable. And I, I told that to her. And she said, well, need to go since we'll lose out on the ticket. So I went. And then in coming back, she presented the ticket which said it was refundable. And so she wanted some, how would you say, some...
I just wanted some, I just wanted, I questioned it because I was told, I signed the check based on his response that it was non-refundable. And that's why I signed the check. And, but it was, after I got the documentation, it was determined that it was refundable. So I felt like I was misled in that response, and I signed the check. And the other piece of it was that council, yes, and you'll need to see Mr. AG's, Mr. Mason's report. He states that council approved it, he showed the minutes, but that was, that was not the issue. Yeah, I know we approved it, we approved it as it was presented. It was presented as government-to-government consultation. After I got the check, it was not government-to-government consultation. And so I questioned that. And then we had a long discussion on it, and he said he would check to see if it was refundable or, and if it was, he wouldn't go. And he would get back with me later that afternoon. He said he checked with staff, and it was non-refundable. I said, well, I don't want to lose the money, so I'll go ahead and sign the check. So there was two issues. It's the way he presented it to council, and we approved it based on that it was government-to-government consultation. But it was not government-to-government consultation. And then it was, then the refundable versus non-refundable issue, so...
So was, was the, was the meeting and the tribal approved by the council? Yes, sir. It was approved, okay. So it was a legitimate thing you went to? And so, and so what, what this is, is just the openness clarification. We here have the Attorney General's response to Angela on the travel.
And I just want to go on record that I disagree with what they did. Once again, I don't feel that his opinion addressed the misrepresentation or even the refundable versus non-refundable. He just stated that there was intent, there was no intentional misrepresentation regarding the trip. And so I, um, I disagree.
And I respectfully disagree with Counselor Thompson in that the council did approve the travel. Whatever representations were made were unintentional. Could the situation have been handled better? Yes. Would it be in the future? Yes. But also, the thing is, is what also troubles me in that when I'm looking at Article 5 of the Constitution, Section 4, when it defines the duties of the treasurer, I don't see a veto power in there. And I think that the treasurer was attempting to exercise a veto power. And so I think that's unconstitutional as well.
I was not trying to exercise a veto. If I did, if I was trying to do that, I would say I vetoed this. And, but I don't, I questioned it as a legitimate, was it a legitimate expense? And based on how it was... And based on how it was presented to the council. And in my opinion, and I, um, I, I can add my own opinion, that it was not. And I, I brought it to council because I felt that they needed to know. Now, um, whether they accept your opinion or not, that's, that's totally up to them.
My view was the council acted, uh, whatever harm was done was harmless. And again, I, my view is that the, uh, treasurer, post-of-treasurer, the office of treasurer does not have the veto power on adopting policy if the council is able.
Again, I did not veto. I was not trying to use any veto power. That's his term, not mine.
So I can, uh, I'm sure there's far-reaching reasons for, for all this, but it doesn't seem to be that big of a deal to me. The big of, the big deal to me is accusing the president of a business council of misrepresentation. That to me is a big legal, uh, potential legal issue?
I'd agree. But I, but I...
Take it for it.
But I investigated it and, uh...
Take it for it.
So, you know, I, I, again, I think it was an attempt to veto the policy of the council. And again, I know that she disagrees, but...
That is not true.
But that's just the way I see it. And so it was my stand beside my thinking.
It was a legitimate meeting that was approved and you traveled and you actually went there and participated?
Correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I am a tribal member. I'm on this, I'm on this roll. I have served this tribe for many years and I am angry with you. I do not appreciate the way you've addressed this body of elected officials. How dare you? Now, Charlie, I know you, sort of said, "Gicky Patsy" but here, when that happened. And I know you wanna know the facts and you can't learn the facts in just a few sentences here. This is my take. You can take it or leave it. I was here. He asked for, to go on this trip to Nagra, Nagprak. When he, they, they all, all the council are asked to get their travel approved by this body. That's transparency. That's responsibility to the tribal dollar and the tribal people that are out there. Bruce asked to go. He said it was government-to-government consultation. Government-to-government consultation is when the United States of America and the Pawnee Nation sit down and talk to one another, they consult with one another. That was not what, that's what he led. And maybe he believed it. I'm not saying he lied. I'm just saying this is what he said. He said it's government-to-government consultation. So they made their decision based that he was going to represent the tribe on a government-to-government consultation with the U.S. government. Well, uh, it turned out that it was not government-to-government consultation. It was a national meeting from the 106th Consultation Section of the, uh, Tribal Historic Preservation Act where the, the, um, government has to consult with American Indian tribes across the country if they're gonna, uh, be, if they're gonna do any, uh, if they find dead remains and that sort of thing. So there were some government-to-government consultations going on up there, but they weren't with the nation. It was other tribes that were up there making their cases to, uh, the National Park Service or whoever it was up there. And Bruce, I was up there, so if I'm wrong and I was spoke, you, you can certainly correct me. But I've been in this business a long time. And so when he went up there, I don't know, uh, how long you got up and talked, how long did you get up? How long did you talk up there?
Oh, I don't know, 20 minutes?
Yeah. And we spent, again, travel money, go up there and talk 20 minutes, thinking that we're going to be talking government-to-government consultation. It was not. So this council made their decision based on erroneous information. Whether it was intentional or was it not, I don't know and I'm not saying it was. But that's what the decision was made on, so they approved the travel. Well, then when we found out evidently that it was not government-to-government, she asked him, "Is the ticket refundable?" Right? And he said, and so she is, she is then is charged with, as treasurer, with writing that check. And being a responsible treasurer, she asked questions about this money that we're spending. And so when it wasn't government-to-government, if I'm speaking, you will let me know. Then she said, "Well, is the ticket refundable? Or can it be used on another, this airline ticket, can it be used for another trip? Maybe, you know, we don't lose it." He came back and said it wasn't. It was not refundable. "Okay, we don't wanna waste the tribal money. You go, I'll sign the check." Come to find out, when she got her documentation back, the ticket was refundable. So she made her decision based on erroneous information again. So that's what we're dealing with here. But the overarching whole thing of this whole deal is holding our elected officials accountable. And you as tribal officials need to, need to monitor each other. We as the people trust you to do that. That's what this is coming from. That's what the basis of this is, Dr. Mike. It is an accountability, it is a transparency and it, and that's, that's my take on it. I do not appreciate the Attorney General speaking to any member of this, my council, my council, the Pawnee tribal member, the derogatory way that he speaks. You're always overstepping her when she tries to speak. You do that to others as well. Now, she's got tough skin. This woman can take care of herself. But I'm here to tell you as a tribal member, I do not appreciate it. I don't, I don't, another thing I will tell you, I've read some of your opinions. I've worked with lawyers on a national basis. I do government-to-government negotiations with tribes and I did it as a federal, uh, representative. And now I'm doing it as a tribal representative, government-to-government, sitting across the table with U.S. federal decision-makers advocating for tribes on the other hand. And, uh, the opinions that we get from lawyers are well-written. They state their opinion only after they tell us what all the facts are and what they're basing that opinion on. The opinions that you write are based on your own, your own opinion. You don't opine based on stated facts. You don't lay out the facts and then come to your decision, your conclusion. Or if you would do that, maybe we could support that. But you don't do that and you know you don't. You compare your briefs with some other lawyers and see, they're not up to date. This is me speaking as a tribal member. Thank you for giving me the time to do this. I apologize if any of y'all think I'm out of hand, but I'm not spoken. I have been and I'm almost 70 years old and I'm damn sure not gonna stop now.
I think these kind of forums are, that's what it's for.
Thank you.
To have members speak their opinions and, you know, bring out whatever is concerning them. So my question is, what is, is there an action ask we take on this travel thing or what is the action that we've done?
I don't think there's an action built. I, I mean, I, I, I was here beginning and, and, you know, Andrew and I, we've discussed this, we've discussed this. Once again, I'm, I'm here, you know, having to answer for something that, um, is, is, is there and, and important to some, not important to others. And that's what we have. So...
President? I just like asked a question. When asked upon if it was non-refundable, where did you go to, to get that information? To find out it wasn't?
I, I asked the one who, who does my travel and was told, and it, it wasn't even, uh, a long time. It was within a minute. So I went down, asked and was told, and I went and told Angela.
Okay, so you consulted someone else on that information?
Yeah, so, and, and once again, this, and, um, our A.G. did the interviews, um, the discussions and things. There, there's no intent, there's, there's no, you know, there isn't. There, there isn't. There hasn't been and things and, um, yeah, here we are, all this, all this time. So, um, I don't think there's anything needs to be, just any action. So if it's all with you, then we will move to item number 13, which is open forum.
Me?
Okay, Ann.
I've had my money mixed up, but with the case and the donations, I think we made $39.
All right, good, good.
And this money, the elders want to go up to Nettarong, Nebraska, to be equipped and pop.
23.
I think you guys would give us any money, we're raising our own.
I'll see you there.
We'll trade it. Hannah brought money for swimming pool money. Yes?
I wanted to ask about the, uh...
20 seconds.
Special election. Will that be, um, all mail-in, uh, ballot?
No, the, the commission is gonna be tomorrow.
Just be like the regular election.
If that's what they want to say.
Because, see, in the water, you're...
Yeah.
So who's to change council or the committee?
I think the Constitution states that it, that, um, you have to have, allow people to come in. You can't just do it by mail-in. I think we made that determination.
It's just regular.
Yeah.
Basically a regular election.
Yeah, within 60 days.
Yeah, within 60 days, we're gonna do a regular election.
I'd like to speak. Um, I, first of all, I wanna apologize to our tribal members and my colleagues for being upset, um, and allowing somebody to make me that upset that I took it, it, I take my oath of office very seriously. And I work hard for the nation as the treasurer and, and budgets and I've got great goals and I work hard. So I took offense to that and I let it get under my skin. So I apologize for the way I behaved since, um, lost, I mean, I shouldn't have got that mad, but when somebody attacks my integrity and says that I'm not taking the office seriously, it, but it bothers me because I work hard. So forgive me. Um, I do have a couple of things that I would like to bring out. Uh, the Pawnee Indian Veterans Program, with that, um, we've been contacted on that by, uh, Tiffany Fritz and I wanted some input from the rest of the council on the ad. I think we should do it, but I don't know what we want in there. If we want just our picture and, uh, wish them a happy, you know, Fourth of July or homecoming, you know, welcoming on the tribal members coming in.
Not just a statement from the council?
Yeah, something like that. So if you all wanna weigh in on that, send an email to Cindy and she'll get it ordered. I think a quarter sheet or, is what we, or half a page or a quarter?
Half a page.
Half a page, yeah, is what we do. So we, any input on that would be great. Um, I think it's $150.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah. Um, I think we've received an, a email from Ella May and I would like, hopefully we can get a response to her on that, on those questions. Um, I wanna reiterate the June 1 budget committee meeting. I hope that you all can be in attendance so that we could, um, look at our revenue and make some decisions. I'd like all your input on that and before we, you know, we'll discuss it and come up with a plan and then we'll present it to the council for decision-making.
Angela, we got them?
I say yes.
That one you can't. No problem.
I say yes. Oh, and then I just want to, uh, do the Housing Authority meeting. When are we gonna do the Housing Authority meeting? You know, we've had, that's been almost a year. So, you know, when are we gonna have that? I hope that'll be scheduled soon to meet with the commissioners and discuss some of those issues.
Yes, question.
So this housing authority thing, you usually do it annually and it's just like they have a report due or you discuss it? What, what is it about?
Um, so the issue, we've received a lot of complaints on the Housing Authority and, um, to, to look into those, we wanted to have a sit-down with the Housing Commission and the director to see if we can get some of those complaints answered and look into those issues.
These are outside complaints to, about the housing people?
Yes, yes. So that's what we're wanting to do.
And, and speaking of housing, we haven't had a report from housing and I don't even know when, nothing.
No, they're supposed to give us that quarterly.
Yeah, we're supposed to have quarterly.
Yeah, this quarterly.
This quarterly.
We give them quarterly.
It's in the quarterly report.
No, I want her in here. I want the director or the, the, you know, president of the commissioners or board in here to speak to us about it. I want numbers and facts and all those things and I wanna know who's in line and who got bumped and all those things.
What's that meeting you'd like to...
Right?
Air holes kinda thing.
We need to know.
That's, that's confidential information to see though, but like we did all this...
Well, I'll dial that.
I forgot to add a couple of things real quick. Um, we had two donations for our interns today. Heather, Heather Hanson came through, uh, $10,000 and then we had another one come in for $3,000. And we have a grant or an application to First Nations for another 20 to support even more interns, to send them from Nebraska as part of our, they're gonna do a inventory, right? They're gonna do agricultural inventory of our farms as part of our seed preservation project.
Nice.
So we, Deb doing the legwork, she's doing all the work. She's hooking up with a bunch of philanthropic organizations that, that are looking out for Pawnee folks, so that's good news. Second thing is the, uh, I wrote it down and I don't, an organization, it's called the National Gathering of the American Indian Veterans. Heard of it, no? It's in, it's in, it's in Illinois. Do I?
John Bird.
Yeah. They're gonna do, they're gonna honor the co-talkers, uh, up there. So they're looking for Pawnee representation. It's Pawnee co-talkers who want to be represented. So we're looking for veterans or anybody who wants to go. And if you have anybody, you can, you can send me the information and I can, I can email it out to...
That, that information there, could you send that to council?
Yes.
Go ahead, send that to council.
Yes, sir.
And that's it.
At July 21st to 23rd.
We got a little bit of time.
Yeah, so...
The email I got concerning that was, I was actually looking for that actual living co-talkers from where I understand.
Yeah, there's none from Oklahoma that are living.
Yeah, that's why I replied as such. There's none, uh, living.
They're looking for a Normandy. The co-talker that landed in Normandy, there's none.
They're, they're looking for him to specifically honor if he's alive, but if he, I mean, I don't know if he is.
There's none.
There's none, but they're also, they're still gonna honor them. They're just, they can't...
That was my reply back to that, uh, letter was that there are no living co-talkers left.
Let's, uh, get that information to council and then, uh, maybe we can look at it and, hopefully send some representation up there because, you know, we did have co-talkers and, uh, be able to be there.
I don't know, again, I don't know all the details. I got a little bit from Mary calling from the P.I. rep.
Okay. I saw Hannah over here, yes?
I just wanted to say, uh, to you all, thank you, my Pawnee Business Council, um, for honoring my husband. It, uh, it made it for my family, all of my children in worship. And, uh, it made, it made it for my children, which is most important because they knew, they knew how much Ellis wanted to serve the Senate. They knew how much he stayed for, for hardcore, he stopped breaking talk out, he was gonna go visit different ones. So you made it. You know, it's important to children when, you know, when my grandfolks, greatfathers serve the council, that's something that's Pawnee people that were proud of. And I know it's, it's children are proud of. And so thank you all for honoring him, for giving us that, for everybody that had a part in it, Andrew and Cindy and everybody up there. It was just he and you. And you know, I was looking at this and I thought, basically, I said, "Oh, look, he's on that third rail, so he's asleep." And I opened up so, my, you know, morning face, I said, "It's hard." It's your... It's your campaign, but I wanted to come and sit and explain to me. And I was thinking, I thought, God, God really want to save him.
Come on, son.
You don't have to go through hell.
That is a good one. Yes, sir.
You know, I just want to say tonight, what I heard here, lodge, call it a lodge. I heard wisdom spoken. I heard some animosity seated. I heard a lot of things navel. You know, and I heard about our new members, you know, council, the seeds that they've taken down. Some of the things that you guys were addressing this evening, you know, I'm going to say this, you know, you new council people that came on board, this president here, there's a number of things that's on that table when you have these other council members. You're going to have to go to it, you're going to have to ask them, you're going to have to catch up, you're going to have to read, you know, that's what it's going to take. Voted, it's going to take that, you know, catch up, uh, because, you know, you're just going to have, you're just going to have to make that time. But like I said, you know, what I heard, you know, I think that, you know, things should have been taken care of. There's been enough time over a lot of these issues that's been going on, months now. Uh, I was back on the initial contact when we started talking about this rule on first community meeting they had on it. You know, we voted for it. That pool, you know, that's what we need. We need that pool. We, you know, we talked about it, but yet, you know, it's still kind of floating along. We, we got the, the funding for the initial part of that, the ICBG funding. Uh, now, you know, this other funding, uh, that, uh, that we, we have to come up with, you know, you know, this reserve funding. Uh, you know, I hear, you hear what's being said here, yet, you know, and at the same time, I know what we, what we'd like to have, our needs, you know, but sometimes we've got to be realistic. We've got to be realistic of what we can do in the light of our time, in the light of what's coming down, in the light of changing, the changes that we could, we're going to see. You all need to be aware of that. And I think you, I think a lot of you are, you know, with this new, new president that we have, there's going to be a lot of funding cut. You know, I always said this, me, I mean, just my opinion, uh, with, with who we are as, as Indian, you know, a lot of times what happens to us over the years is, a lot of times, I compare it to a pendulum. You know, sometimes, you know, that pendulum will, will let up, will go up here, and, and, you know, down here, you know, we're going to get, uh, the things that we need, that, that time, uh, the grants, uh, the allowance for things that we need as a nation, and yet when that pendulum comes back down, which is going to come down, it's starting to come, then it's going to, we're going to get cut, we're going to start getting cut, like that. We're going to see everything tighten up. We can expect this to come by, just, oh, there's a different area just coming, and right there, grants, ICBG, A&amp;A, all these things. There's a possibility that we're, you know, we're not going to have these things at our beckoning. You guys got to know that. So, you know, again, considering your, uh, in your seats now, that's, that's a hard thing. You know, the decisions you've got to make, that's a hard thing today. You know, I sat there, I know what it's like, you know, I felt that pressure. It was hard because, you know, you, you don't want to say no to your people, you know, you want every, you, you don't want to step on nobody's toe, but every time you make a decision, you're going to step on somebody's toe. But, you know, that's, that's, but that's what you got put in here for now. I mean, that's, you, you wanted to make these decisions for our people, so, you know, and it's up to you, you're our supreme council, whatever you say, that's it, I don't care. That, that's it, whatever you've got to say here, that, that's going to happen. So, you know, uh, think things out carefully. Like I said, what I heard this evening, you know, in this lodge, there was wisdom, there was animosity, there was other things that, you know, I, I wasn't quite comfortable with hearing, you know, uh, but there, there's a lot of things going on. And yet, a lot of time, my wife and I sit back home for the last six, seven years, you know, I haven't done much of nothing, and yet, just by this evening, I'm hearing a lot, you know, and it makes me wonder, you know, because, you know, right now, I, I've been seated, I say chief, uh, our AB, Pete Hobbin, they sit me in that position, me and, uh, Ed Ody, Kim Jim, you know. So we're going to try to do our best there, you know, best fitted in what we can do and hopefully work with, uh, you council people, you know, work with you alone, and try to, hopefully work in the best interest of our people, you know, whatever we can do. But like I said, you guys, you know, it's going to be a hard road for you. I pray for you, you know, I am praying for you, uh, that you guys will, will make the right decisions, even though, like I said, there's things we want, and yet, a lot of times it may not be realistic, you know, uh, because of our changing times, what we're going to face. So I don't know. You know, that's where you guys should make that decision on, that's where you should make that judgment off. But whatever it is, we're going to go along with it, you know? It's okay, then, then you make that decision, we're going to have to live with it. Just, you know, think about those things, you know, and, uh, again, I appreciate all of you, you know, just all, you know, y'all sitting there and what you're doing, so, uh, you know, I'm sure, you know, we, we, we're going to leave ourselves in capable hands, so just let you guys decide. I just wanted to say those few things, you appreciate that time. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I, I just want to say a few words on the behalf of the Pawnee Seed Preservation Project. And, you know, there, the future hasn't been any brighter than it is right now. We are getting so much attention on our seeds, and it, it's a real precious gift that we have now that we work very hard to bring back. Memorial Day dance, we give, uh, we, we gave, uh, some, we ground up today some blue corn for the, the people, and, uh, and we were teaching some ladies last summer, come to dry court. None of them had ever done it before, that specifically, uh, we gave all that we had left, albeit Memorial Day dance, you know, but it just encourages, uh, us to, to think that, you know, one of these days, we will be feeding ourselves a lot of our seeds. And, uh, we gave sixty thousand seeds for three acres of corn. That's the biggest garden that we've had all these years now, and, uh, we're going to get a lot from that garden. What I like about Andrew, working with him, is that he's being very proactive, you know, and we can't be reactive to, uh, you know, when all those seeds come in, ONG, what are we going to do with it? Well, we'll have a plan. And, uh, you know, we know that you can go to Walmart and buy a bushel of corn for sixteen dollars and fifty cents, and we know that if we get to that point where we're selling a bushel of our blue corn, we could sell it for forty dollars. You know, so there's a lot of thought processes here, you know, we, we've, we like the idea that someday our, our very nutritious corn is, uh, going to really have some good benefits over what's, what's not being processed to death and not, has never been since nineteen forties been processed for nutrition. But we're blessed to have a nutritional food that's Pawnee. And I just, uh, hope that when you say your prayers about, uh, our people, that you include that food. Tomorrow, we have a real important meeting. We're, we're actually meeting with the United Nations people. They're going to help us do something that we're striving to do, which is let's secure our seeds for the nation. And once we can do that, then, then we'll have a lot more say as to how we are going to use those, those seeds, how we're going to share them. So we hope that we, in the future, will be able to give you wonderful updates. And, uh, footnote, we, we love the fact that, uh, that the leadership here, um, is one that, that has the power to empower, and the women that are participating in this field that. So I just want to thank you for that, and the encouragement and the hopes and prayers that we have, and the good direction that we're going. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. All right. Folks, look at your calendars for June council. And we have a quarterly meeting on June the third. And, uh, and so here's my, here's my suggestion, and see if you, if you all agree with me, that we have a council meeting in addition to the quarterly meeting on the third, and then have a another council meeting on the twenty-second, an evening meeting. How does that sound? Is that agreeable?
So the third and the twenty-second?
So third and the twenty-second.
Okay, you're combining our regular quarterly meetings with our council meeting.
And just have a council meeting.
Okay, and then, uh, the council meeting on the twenty-second?
Yes. Other, otherwise, we would have another meeting in addition to the quarterly meeting.
Yeah, a week later.
That sounds good.
Plus, plus, that would put us on the, the last Thursday, would be on the night of Hometown.
Yeah.
So we don't want to do that, first night of Hometown.
So it'll be the twenty-eighth?
So we're looking, we're looking at the twenty-second?
Oh, twenty-second.
Evening of the twenty-second?
Oh.
And the quarterly meeting on the third.
I have to be serious.
Calling in.
I want to call you.
All right.
I want, I want to, yeah, I want to, yeah, let it go.
This is June third?
Sure have for real slate.
Full slate day.
Is everyone good with that? Go on. Good? Good?
June third on the Saturday.
June third is on Saturday. That's the quarterly meeting, and we have those every quarter.
Every quarter we have them. And at ten o'clock, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Eight-thirty, okay.
What time on that?
No, it's Saturday.
It's nine.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, it's nine.
Nine AM. Okay, that's good.
Because I usually do like a herb breakfast.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Cindy, you got that?
June third, five o'clock.
Okay, there's no other word?
No word.
We can have an entertaining motion to dismiss.
That was executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's, uh, what we're going to do is we're going to, let's take a motion to go into executive session.
Somebody?
Second. Cassie, call for the vote.
Good night, hope that you. Catherine, she's, 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 she's right here trying to.
You made the motion. No, Angela made the motion.
Angela made the.
I seconded.
Mr. Knight, you seconded.
I seconded.
Okay.
That's what I.
Yes.
Tricia McCray, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Good night, sweetheart. See you next time.
Sammy Adson. Donna Harris?
Yes.
Charles Knight.
Yes. Okay. We'll go into executive session.